If you're able, I'd ask you to join me as we say the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
All in order, and can I get a motion to accept tonight's?
Still moved?
Second. Okay, all in favor? I think you can give it to Deb.
No, I think that was Maura.
Was it Maura?
Didn't say a word.
All right. It was just the flashy pineapple. And so with that, we have a whole lot of news transpired in the next room over.
Yes, yes, so good evening, everyone. As Mr. Hannah is referencing, we started tonight in the six-thirty hour by honoring a lot of our staff members, those folks that have retired after long illustrious careers here in Irvington and having impacted so many students' lives through their career, and then celebrating the tenure appointments of a number of other staff members. So a great way for us to be able to celebrate kind of the closing weeks of a school year. We spend so much time celebrating our students this time, it's great to stop and acknowledge our staff members. I also want to say that our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on the eighteenth, we are going to stop and honor trustees that are completing their term. Mr. Graber, who will be returning us for another tour of duty, and then, of course, Ms. Hargraves, who's going to return to the general population, I think.
True.
We'll see about that.
Any candidates we can appoint her to?
So we look forward to recognizing you both at the next meeting. I'd be remiss if I didn't go without, on the record, taking time to stop and thank everyone in our school community who participated in the recent election on the twenty-first. Certainly, the support on the district budget and the capital project will have significant impacts on our students for many, many years to come to ensure that we have high-quality, well-sustained learning spaces. Also, you know, accolades to the board committee and everyone that came out to support the projects because it really is a window into responsible planning, looking at maintaining debt neutrality, and tackling projects that are essential right now. So kudos to everybody on that front, and congratulations to Mr. Graber for being re-elected, as I inferred a moment ago, and to Ms. Bernstein for being elected to the board. And of course, clap. And then I certainly acknowledge Ms. Friedman, who ran, and commend her for her efforts and her interest in being part of the leadership.
I just want to mention two, a couple things. One, I think the budget approval was the highest we've received in decades, perhaps.
Seventy-nine percent? I don't know anyone.
It beat last year's seventy-seven.
The other thing is, I went to the Westchester-Platinum School Board end-of-year dinner, and I had many trustees coming up, but, you know, they look around to see how other districts have done, and they were impressed with the turnout there in Irvington. So that's really great. Except then I went to England where they were voting on EU candidates, and it was seventy-five percent turnout there, so we did well, we could always do better.
Thank you to everyone that participated in the election. And then the final update from administration before, actually, maybe two things. Before we jump in, I just want to, again, thank everyone who participated in the second annual school district survey that was administered last month. We're actually going to be announcing a special meeting that'll take place on Monday, June seventeenth, at seven-thirty here in this room. With Bernstein, mark your calendar. We will be joined by our research partners from K-12 Insight, who are going to present this year's results. We certainly encourage everyone in our community to come out and see what you and your neighbors had to say. This important feedback is always a good tool for us to process and to help inform our future planning, not only at school and district level, but for our school community as well. And then finally, going off course a little bit here, at our last Board of Education meeting, the Board, you took action to appoint a new teacher, but a teacher that isn't all so new to the district, Mike McQuillan. We've been very fortunate to have Mike at Dow's Lane this year in the lead replacement capacity, and this year, you appointed Mike a probationary track position. And, you know, there's always those moments, and I talk about, and I look around the room, the folks that I've been fortunate enough to participate in the hiring process. Mike, too, is going to be one of those memorable experiences, and when I officially offered the position, to see that enthusiasm and that passion, just genuine excitement for being a part of the Irvington and the Dow's community. So it was important for Mike to want to be here. He wasn't here last week, so I said, "You know what? Come on out next time."
We want to thank you.
We're lucky to have you, Mike. Thank you. That's the report for this evening.
Very good. I don't want to presume, once I did that, in that time of the year, I should have.
Well, since our presentation is in that curriculum teaching and learning domain, Dr. Core.
Yeah, exactly.
Doctor Core and our colleagues are going to be busy.
Because we're getting off to a little bit of a later start, if you don't mind, I think, can we move the committee reports to after the presentation? Would that be okay?
Please.
All right. With that in mind, we do have an opportunity for comments from members of the community. You're welcome to go to the microphone and state your name and speak for up to three minutes, or, and ask questions, make statements.
Even trustee Lexer, I think?
All right, very good. With that, then we'll move on to a follow-up to our prior presentation, in which we learned about much of the work of our K-35 program. We'll now have our 2019 secondary end-of-year update.
Great, thank you. We took a bit of a different look and pass at the presentations for the end of the year, and we're real pleased and excited with the opportunity that our elementary administrators and Doctor Core had last time to give different types of windows into the work that has happened in the school, some more of the clinical approaches to what happens in the classroom to be able to support and monitor student growth. So we look forward to extending that similar conversation this evening with dialogue with our secondary administrators. So it's sure to be a very informative, engaging presentation tonight. So I pass the mic off to Doctor Core to do a fine introduction before my middle school colleagues jump in.
Thank you.
I think we need to be in the regular presentation, not the PDF. No, that's okay. I just realized, I looked up, I'm like, wait a minute, that doesn't look like Chrome. You could just...
I also want to acknowledge that my colleague, Ms. Stein, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, is not with us tonight because she's at the annual New York State School Business Officials Conference. And as you know Carol, you can imagine, I've got a number of text messages and emails about the things that she's learning and the aha moments that have occurred.
Oh, great.
So we certainly can look to benefit from her learning over these three days this week.
And then I should note also, our second Vice President, Brian Friedman, is attending the personal business thing, you're going to be able to get later to see. We have to, we know that he works hard for us, and I'll be missing tonight. And if you're watching from home, this is a great evening to come because there's usually some food left over from our rec.
I'm going to email, I'm just going to share it in Google. Pauline, you logged it? Paul, yeah, Pauline logged in.
I just shared it.
It's so good, the presentation that we thought was suspense building up to it. There we go.
Thank you.
And away we go.
Okay. Okay, so good evening, everyone. As Doctor Harrison said, just a couple of short weeks ago, we were here talking about the elementary and the work that was done this year at the elementary school, and I think what you'll see tonight is a really nice continuum. Some of the areas that both the middle school and high school will focus on are very connected to the work at the K-5 level, and some as appropriate or unique to their buildings, as was for Dow's and Main Street School. So we always include these beginning slides, not because everybody is dying for me to read them again after the millionth time, but really because we try and frame it as a complete presentation, and it really is just a reminder that all of the work that we're doing, no matter the building, is steeped in our goals, the strategic objectives, or the goals that we set for ourselves through those strategic objectives, the overarching goals of curriculum and instruction, and looking at a balanced assessment system, and increasing the use of data. So again, the same exact slides that you saw for elementary, because this is the foundation of the work that we do on a daily basis. Our theories of action continue to guide us, and it's interesting, I, we've been doing a lot of interviewing lately, and that's interviewing, I've interviewed some teachers and interviewed certainly plenty of administrators recently, and many, many, many of them refer to our goals and our theories of action and have found that on our website, and see how this is the guy, these are really the guiding principles and ideas behind the work that we're doing regu, on a regular basis. So our theories of action are steeped in what we want our students to know, look like, and be able to do, and our commitment through professional learning to get there. Our accountability system, or one of our accountability systems, just like every other school district, is observation and evaluation. So we link our third theory, which is to say that we have a consistent, well-developed approach across our district to observation and evaluation, and certainly, while in compliance with APPR, it really is much more than that for us, in that it guides our ongoing conversations, it guides our instructional rounds all year long in our buildings, and guides the common conversations we have at our grade levels and in our departments. We talk about the well-developed brain, it's just our goal, it's what we are working toward every day. We are trying to develop the skills and the thinking of our teachers so that they can provide the deepest and the most cohesive instruction to our students that's steeped in really well-developed content knowledge, but while thinking through the lens of what instructional strategies do I need to implement in my classroom on a daily basis to ensure that we are moving students on this continuum of development. We are steeped in these four learning goals, and we continually ask our teachers to consider what are the four, how do you work toward these instructional goals on a daily basis? We do not expect them working toward four goals on a daily, all on a daily basis, but we expect our teachers to be able to name which of the four learning goals is my lesson or is my unit working on at any given time, and how am I getting there, and then ultimately, how will I know? So we continue to work on a developed, a well-developed balanced assessment system, formative, summative, and I think tonight, as I think the Board has certainly previewed, we're going to share some data and some entry points around data that some are new this year, and some are just continuations and continue to develop the work that we've started to do over the last several years. In using that data, we have continued to not only, the principals engaging in that data, but we have continued to engage teachers on a regular basis in data. Two presentations ago, where I presented the student performance report, I was able to share examples of what our instructional coaches are doing at the buildings, and how our standardized data is being used and integrated into the thinking, but for the building-level presentations, they're able to expand on that and give different examples other than just the standardized state, New York state assessments. So with that, I'm going to shift over and turn it over to David and Allison.
I just want to say thank you, and I think our presentation, it's kind of cursory now, but these are all aha moments along our journey, so thank you for reminding us.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Doctor Core, thank you to the Board, Doctor Harrison. You know, as we begin, I want to just build a little bit on what Rena just said, in the sense that what we are going to hear tonight, and I hope, I hope will sound somewhat familiar with respect to what you heard from our elementary colleagues. Obviously, there is a secondary level nature to it, but we are steeped in those same goals. We do all talk as a unit around the idea of teaching practices that elevate student thinking. We do all talk as a unit about how we can build a more balanced and thorough assessment system, and how we can better use data to move our program forward. So while it applies uniquely at each building, those goals do link us and do allow us to function as a system, and I think it's very important to keep in mind as we go along. I'm actually very excited to start tonight's presentation by talking a little bit about an assessment that we've done over the course of this year on something that's very new for us at the building, and that is the move forward in our PLTW program, which is known at the middle level as the Gateway Program, to include not just the classes that have essentially become the backbone of our technology program, and at the middle level, just to remind the Board, the middle level is one, is the one place in a student's journey through K-12 where there are required classes in technology. And so at middle school, we have adapted the two PLTW foundation courses, as they're known, which are design and modeling, and automation and robotics, as our seventh and eighth grade technology courses. But, and so that transformation of our program happened over the, over the period of several years. What's happened over that time, though, is the recognition that more is possible and more exists for students, and that's concurrent with the realization that we have had within our program a number of great options for students programmatically, but also a lot of places where students kind of didn't have an option. We had students, for instance, that were sitting in study halls every other day for a full year, some students, bless you, every day for a year, right? And for us, in really considering what we thought the best possible program for the middle school would be, particularly for eighth graders, it didn't involve, you know, spending a period of every day, or even every other day all year long, in a, in a time period where we didn't have a really highly engaging program for them. And so as we began to explore what additional options that we might be able to offer and implement for students, building upon the work that we had done with respect to PLTW really came into focus for us through what are known as the specialization units, or as we just began to call them, the electives. And so over the course of time, going through a selection process of which, which might be the first places for our students to go, first options that we might want to offer, we looked at programs that might be contiguous with things that would be able to be picked up upon in the high school, or might build upon prior experiences in the middle school. And as you see in the 2018-19 assessment model there, we set some goals. We wanted to increase STEM-based opportunities, we knew that we had opportunities for students who wanted to branch out in the arts through studio art, we have a highly subscribed performance music program, we have a accelerated program in earth science for students who are interested there, but we had another place to go, and that became, you know, and we approached that goal through this implementation. We wanted to, you know, as I said before, we wanted to get away from this idea that every student, or most students, were going to have a study hall. We had a number of students whose schedules were already full, but we had a number of students whose schedules were not, and we wanted to really do something that was meaningful there. And so we implemented these three programs this year, that was green architecture, energy and the environment, and computer science for innovators and makers, and those were, those were selected for a purpose. When you think about what lies ahead for students in our high school program, we think about the engineering, the architecture programs that are offered at the high school through PLTW, we talk about sustainability as a, as a goal that exists within our earth science program, as well as at the high school level, and then we talk about this idea that a computer science sequence is something that's been an objective of ours. We have been previously offering an accelerated computer programming course. Over time, that, it may, it became clear to us that that was not the best option, the best way to go for students, and so we replaced it with computer science for innovators and makers this year. That involved training our staff to be able to implement these new courses, and for the first time, one very unique factor this year was the fact that our, this, one of our PLTW courses was taught by someone other than a technology teacher at the middle school, and that really was, was a nice broadening of the base of support for the STEM initiatives and for the PLTW program. One of our science teachers picking up the energy and the environment course, showing some nice crossover there between those subject areas. As we get to the end of this first year, one of the ways that we're evaluating the program is the number of students that ultimately took the course. We wanted to make sure we were engaging students more thoroughly. And so as I, as I sit here, I can tell you that now that approximately thirty-six percent of the students in our eighth grade class took one or more of these electives. Some students actually, after taking one, said, "Hey, I want to take another one," and signed up for one for the second semester. And you have to understand that in context, because there are many students within our class who can't take another subject. If a student takes earth science and is in a performing music group, their schedule is full. If a student is getting support, you know, or a considerable amount of support, and is in a music, or even sometimes when they're not in a music group, their schedule is full. So we're drawing from only a certain percentage of the pool to begin with, and nearly all of the students in that pool ended up in one or more of these courses. What we saw in terms of the work product within the courses, think about students in the energy environment course, we actually walked in, Doctor Core and I, one day, as students were making wind turbines, and having learned a great deal about how the production of energy occurs, how we can produce energy in a sustainable fashion, what it takes to actually produce that, and what the impact of those, of the creation of those types of instruments is, actually then got hands-on and began to evaluate their work and look at the design process, which they had already learned in the PLTW process, or, I'm sorry, course the year earlier, and then to extend that learning by building that physical model. So that's an example, and there are others, but I think what I would say most about it is that we see a growing level of enthusiasm, and when we look forward to 2019 and 20, we are, we are going to go forward with the same three electives for the year to come, and we've already begun some of that work of implementation that you see there in terms of promoting these electives to our seventh graders, who are going to be eighth graders next year, and really beginning to see, do we have enough options as we now sit? Are there other options that we might want to consider? And by the time we get to 2021, our goal is really to be saying, is this, are we in the right place? Is there a consideration that we might want to make of looking even to opportunities for seventh graders in this, in this regard, and then going from there? You know, obviously, those choices will be impacted by the feedback we're receiving from students, by the continued growth in the numbers in, within our eighth grade, and other things as well, but certainly, we're very enthusiastic about this first year of the implementation and the results that we've seen thus far.
Yes? Who would you prefer to get questions right at this point, or the building?
Which way we're special?
Why don't we go through the whole middle school, and then we do a middle school question, and then we can do similar to high school?
Okay.
Unless there's a clarifying question or something isn't understood.
So just moving forward, as I said at the beginning, and Doctor Core had mentioned, our goals, our building goals are, you know, aligned with the goals of the district, and so when you see to implement instructional practices that elevate student thinking and understanding, you saw that, that same goal a little while ago, you saw it two weeks ago, or at the last, or, I guess it was one of them, at the last presentation? And, you know, sitting and thinking about it, and preparing for tonight, and looking across the past three years was really a nice experience, because while you know it in the moment, you really get a chance to appreciate it as you, as you look at it over a longer period of time. And we think about this idea of instructional practices, what are we talking about? Well, we're talking about designing lesson plans that are, that are aimed to elevate student thinking as their intention, not at the cost of content, not at, not saying that, you know, we don't care what we teach as long as students are thinking, because in truth, students need to have something to think about. In fact, what we're looking to do is we're actually elevating the content because students are thinking deeply about it and caring deeply about it. And so we've talked a lot over the years about essential questions, and I'm not, I don't know that we want to go into great depth about what they are again or not, but I do want to say this, for a long time at the middle school, we've had a big focus and a big emphasis on the idea of questioning and discussion as a way to help students become better problem solvers, flexible thinkers, and communicators. That's, that's been at the core of our work for quite some time now, and so as we began this work of essential questions, we started from a place of saying, this is already important to us, how do we take it to the next level? And so what you see over the course of these three years, as we go from saying, okay, we're going to actually name a big question that is meant to say, what is this unit all about? What is this course all about? And it's within that frame that I think we've really begun to make the headway that we want to make when we think about the questions that we're asking and the use of those questions. I think we ask a lot of good questions from time to time. I think that the work of saying, what is the question, is, has been work that has been very stimulating for teachers, and has helped us to move our practice forward. Over the course of time, we begin to see, you know, the movement from creating questions to using questions, to actually making questions the center of our instruction, and then the result being the fact that we're actually saying, okay, if these are the questions we're asking, well, how do we know if students are really developing the skills as thinkers that we really want them to? And that's where you get to that, that final box there, 2018-19, toward the bottom, and you see accurately aligned EQs and teaching thinking in the inner planners, and even beyond that, accurately aligned stage-one EQs and teaching thinking with stage-two assessments. And so that really brings us to where a huge amount of work has been done this year, when I think about our faculty meetings and our, and our teacher goals and so forth, I want to talk about that in a second. This idea of saying, what is it that we want to see, and how will we know it when we see it? How will students show us? And that has yielded, I would say, a year in which there has been more clarity around the work needed to get students to, to do what it is that we're seeking through their performance, rather than through more traditional means. So what I would say about that is this, where does this get seen for us? Where do Allison and I see this? Allison will talk about the goal of assessment in a second. It gets seen through our day-to-day observation and evaluation process, it gets seen through our goal-setting process that we go through with teachers at the beginning of the year, in which they're talking about goals around their professional practice, and it gets seen through our end-of-year process, where we're reflecting on those goals, we're connecting them with what happened along the way within the observation process. And that's how, at this point in the year, this is a timely presentation, because I can sit here and I can say to you, as I met with the twenty-four teachers that I'm working with this year on a year-long evaluation, I can say that three-quarters of those teachers had goals in the area of instructional design and/or, and/or assessment, and they produced work that I either saw through my observations of those teachers, or that was connected as artifacts when they, when they shared their reflection with me, that's supported the progress that they made from one year to the next with respect to their practice, with respect to their planning, with respect to their assessment or what have you. So that's a, that's a big thing there, and I would say that, for me, it is really, really hard to not think straight to that observation process, straight to that classroom visitation process, when I say, how do I know what's going on? I know because of what we see in classrooms, and that ultimately proves to be very important data for us on a day-to-day basis. So with that, Allison, we'll talk a little bit about the second goal, that being assessment.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work that's happening at the middle school. So as David said, the second goal is really related, obviously, to that first goal. It's the teaching and then the assessment, the how do we know, which Doctor Core also referenced earlier. So this slide, again, shows the progression and the growth of our work at the middle level towards achieving that idea of a balanced assessment system. And I will say, we've used a lot in our work, as we've engaged in this work, the analogy of a photo album, which I attribute to Jay McTig, one of the UVD gurus, and that idea of wanting, you know, a single snapshot is informative and tells us something about the story, but it doesn't tell us the whole story. And so the idea is for teachers to develop a battery, a mirage of assessments over the course of a unit of study, so that they're assessing those four instructional goals that Doctor Core referenced earlier, the content knowledge, the skills, the thinking, but also to be thinking about the different formats and types of assessment. So David just referenced, too, we're seeing a lot more assessments, too, that are more of a performance-based nature, we're seeing an increase in formative, as well as summative assessments. We're seeing an increase in formative as well as summative assessments. So as teachers embarked a few years ago on the articulation of curriculum, they were really focused on stage one, identifying the content knowledge, the skill, the thinking. What are the learning outcomes that I want for students at the end of the study? In the past two years, we've really now been ready to now look at our assessment through the lens of those and four instructional goals and identify, if we said that these were our learning outcomes, do we in fact find assessments that are measuring those different learning goals? And I would say at the middle level, you know, we've grown a lot in the area of how do we actually measure thinking across the different content areas? And as you can see, we've sort of evolved our work, and it's really been a long-term goal of refining stage-two assessments, but then going back and looking at stage-one. So we're always toggling between the two so that we have assessments and units of study that both have explicit teaching in terms of what do we want students to know, understand, and be able to do, and then how do we know what are those assessments looking like? We also wanted to just give you a sprinkling of some of the different data measures or tools we use at the middle level. This is certainly not an end-all-be-all list, but it's a balance, as you can see, both qualitative and quantitative tools that we're using to measure student performance. Some of those on the list we'll speak to tonight as part of the presentation, some of the newer tools that we've adopted in the past few years, but it gives you just a lens into how are students being assessed. What we're particularly proud of at the middle level in terms of, I'm going to call it Goal Three, the goal of using data to both inform, planning, instruction, is the development of our data team at the middle level. So in the spirit of trying to infuse a culture of data in our building, and also along with our development of our Response to Intervention, RTI program at the middle level, it made a great deal of sense for us to develop a data team, which is one of the key components of an RTI program, along with, for those of you who know, an RTI program promotes that there's a universal screener. There's a screener that's assessing all students in the areas of reading and math, which you've heard about from our elementary colleagues. So we studied a lot of different screeners with the help of Dr. Core, but we ultimately thought it made a great deal of sense to use AIMS Web, which is what is being used at the K to V level. And we'll talk a little bit about that. But I think what's been critical too, in terms of developing this data culture in the middle level, is having a team. The team is of twelve teachers. They range from AIS teachers to special educators to related support providers. And we, this year, I would say we were fully up and running. We meet consistently, three to four times across the year for a half of a day, and we analyze the data. And I'll speak a little bit to that, to show you our processor protocol in a minute. But I think that that's been critical as one way to start to get teachers engaged and excited and interested in looking at data as we think about assessing our programs, assessing our curriculum, assessing our professional development, both on a broader scale, and then looking to assess individual students and make recommendations for supports. Part of our data team development required us to identify what's referred to as a data set. I just said a few minutes ago, we always want, we want to have multiple measures when assessing a particular student. And so you can see up on the screen, these are the, you know, five different data points that we initially look at when we have questions about a learner, AIMS Web, the grade in the content area classes, the New York State test scores, and we also look at attendance. Someone might wonder why. I know my colleague Joyce presented her attendance policy that she developed. We all have, you know, have attendance, you know, as a challenge in our buildings, and so attendance is definitely, you know, an important data point if you're concerned about a child's performance in school. And then discipline referrals, because they would be out of class a bit. So in terms of how are we using the AIMS Web data? I know that you saw from Dow's Lane, an example of a tier transition report. So as you know, AIMS Web measures the reading and the math skills of a particular learner. What you're seeing in front of you is the transition report for our sixth graders across this school year. So this is an example of how we can run this type of a report and look at and assess, how is our program, how is, how is the cohort doing overall? And if you look below in terms of the transition details, you can get a sense of how many students were at each tier, high risk, moderate risk, low risk, and what happens to those students across the year in terms of their movement. And so the trend that is shown on this slide is that we have a percentage of students moving into the green tier across the year, which means low risk, and fewer students in the high or moderate tiers. As part of our data team, when we thought of, okay, we have this data set that we want to look at, a student's AIMS Web score, their New York State test score, their grade in that particular content area, but we wanted to be consistent in terms of what are, what's the entrance criteria for a tier-two a support class, whether that be for reading, for writing, for mathematics? And so we came up, and we've been trialing these out, as you can imagine, you have to try something out and then assess, is that, is that actually working? So in terms of the AIMS Web, what we look at is two data points for an individual learner. One is what's called their overall composite score. So for a student who scores overall forty percent or lower, we dig deep into that student, and I'll show you in a minute what that looks like. We also notice a student who might, whose composite score might be above forty percent, but they have a subtest that's twenty-five percent or lower. We want to dig deep into that. So the reading AIMS Web has three subtests, vocabulary, silent reading fluency, reading comprehension. The math AIMS Web also has three subtests. So there's two, two AIMS Web data points that we really look at, and then if we see something that's below our threshold, as we like to call it, we dig deeper on that child. We would also look at his or her state test score, in, in this case, it would be the ELA. We also look at their grade. In ELA, it's a little different than math. When we look at a student's math grade, we can really push aside and just look at tests and quizzes. That's not the same in ELA because it's typically not like a lot of tests and quizzes, so we look at the overall grade. And then you'll see in a moment, when we look at a few students in depth, is if we have concerns, we might request more diagnostic assessments before we make a decision about what tiers-two support they might benefit from, and that are the Achieve and the Fountas and Pennell reading level. Fountas and Pennell, I know you're familiar with from the elementary.
I'm sorry, I had a question. I just don't understand, like, what the Achieve three thousand assessment is. Is that another computer-based one?
Yes. And it's most, mostly like nonfiction, so there's like a benchmark assessment that you would do to sort of get the child's initial lexile level.
Okay, thank you.
And then the Fountas and Pennell is a one-on-one teacher and student assessment.
Oh, so it's an assessment, it's not like, oh, what is this child doing independently in the classroom?
The Achieve is an assessment that the reading teacher would still facilitate and manage, but it would be, the child would be on a device, as you mentioned, and...
No, but with the Fountas and Pennell, it would be sitting one-on-one?
The reading teacher would be sitting one-on-one in her reading room with the child. So yes, it mirrors the elementary model.
Thank you.
So again, we have our data set, the key components being, we look at the AIMS Web, we look at the New York State test, test score, and we look at the grade. So on the screen, this is just a little snapshot of three different students who we looked at, just three, we looked at many more, during our winter data team meeting, which was towards the end of January. It was right after the students had taken the winter AIMS Web. One of the great aspects of AIMS Web is the data is readily available as soon as the student finishes, so there's no wait time like we know there is with the state test. And so if you look across the grid, the first column that you see, you know, information in is just their ELA, you know, their quarter grade. So this would have been their first quarter and their second quarter grades combined. Then you see the AIMS Web percentile. So you can see the three students listed all fell below our composite forty percent or below. So that was sort of our trigger. We first look at their AIMS Web score as a data team. We have a chart, and that's like, we start then to go deeper. We would look at the grade, we would look at the state test score. Of course, this would be, this is a sixth grader, so it would be from his fifth grade New York State test score. Student B is particularly interesting because you will see at the last column in the next steps, we had a recommendation, because when we looked at his score, not only was he below our cutoff score of forty percent, he scored a thirty-one percent. When we looked at where he had scored in the fall, so in mid-October, and now this is mid-January, we noticed a significant drop. So that was also an impetus to say, we need to dig deeper, we need to do additional assessments, because currently he was not in any type of a reading support class. Here is his performance summary report. So this is that same student who, in the winter, dropped from a fifty-six, from the fifty-six percentile to the thirty-first percentile. So that, along with his New York State test score, which was one, his ELA grade was actually in the B range, so that's obviously, you know, above our criteria. But when we established our criteria, we said if a child meets two or more of the criteria points, we're definitely considering him or her for support. So what happened is after the winter data team meeting, we recommended that he work with the reading teacher and she do the diagnostic assessment of the Fountas and Pennell reading level. He was a great level, excuse me, a below-grade level in terms of where he should have been on the Fountas and Pennell level gradient system. And so what happened is we put him in reading class. So that was the intervention. He was going to have every other day, because that's the, the model at the sixth grade. And then what I wanted to highlight is, when you look at his spring score in reading, he's earned fifty-eight percent. So another way to look at the same data of the same student, and I know this is a graphic that you've seen from our elementary colleagues, this highlights like the national, like where he, where the national expectation is, and then where he is. The dotted line is, is like where you should be nationally across the year. The blackened line shows his progression, so you see the dip down in the middle of the year, January, and then you see him starting to go back up where he scored fifty-eight percent. So again, we wanted to show how we use AIMS Web to look at the cohort, right, a broad lens, but then also how it's one of our data points when we look at children consistently. And that's another, I think, outcome of our data team, is that we have a consistent practice when we gather together as a team to look at children who we have concerns about, and we're, you know, adhering to more consistent criteria for entrance, so that we can have, you know, the right profile of a, of a learner in, in the classroom.
I'm sorry, I just have one more clarification.
Yes.
So would you say that forty percent on the national measure for AIMS Web is similar to a two in the state test? Is that about parallel in terms of percentile?
It's hard to say, because the state test require, is also writing, AIMS Web is just reading.
Okay.
So I would be hesitant to, to make that comparison, you know, and those are, like, the New York State test is like state standards, this is a norm reference, like national test too, so it's not really apples to apples, in my opinion.
Okay.
They don't, they're not compatible.
All right. I was trying to get a sense of like why, you know, the choice was for forty percent on the national.
Well, it's, it's interesting you say that. When we, it's, we talked with our Dow's colleagues and our Main Street colleagues, and they had different, like, like a cutoff, so we, we went in the middle. We thought, and, you know, we actually think it's too high, like, there was a lot of really rich conversation on our team. But I will say, through this process, and we've gone through it three intense times this school year, after the fall, the winter, and the spring administration of AIMS Web, we've really felt like most of the students who were already in a support class were appropriate placed. We did, however, find instances where we thought, well, a child has actually made progress, we can pull back that level of support. And then in other instances, particularly with students who were new to our building, it was a quick measure to figure out, like, they need a support, okay, so we didn't have to wait, you know, and we had this consistent tool to compare and contrast. But I think with all this work, it's very much like evolving, and we're revising, you know, even our own data set and, and the measures. So thank you for asking that. We, you know, we literally said we'll go in the middle of Dow's and Main Street.
Okay, thanks for that explanation.
So now I'm going to turn it over to David, who's going to talk about data and acceleration.
So Allison talked a lot about the use of AIMS Web and the RTI process and, and other data that we use there. And so when we think about RTI, oftentimes we're thinking about students who are, who are having one level of struggle or another. But it's important to note that, that data forms an important part of our process when you think about students who are, who are excelling or, or performing at a very high level and are being contemplated as students who might perhaps accelerate their course of study. Acceleration happens at a couple of different times at the middle school. The first time that it occurs is actually on a student's way into the middle school when we make a decision about math placement. And this is a place where I, I think I want to, I want to talk for a few minutes about how we've gotten to the place that we've gotten to, what we've done with the data that we've gotten, and how we've learned through that process. I think it's important to start by saying, when we place a student into an accelerated course, it's, you know, we often hear people use the terms honors and accelerated interchangeably, and they're not interchangeable. Acceleration means that a student is taking a course that everybody's going to take, they're just taking it earlier and, and faster, really, than, than everybody else. And I think that's, that's important to say, because when we make a decision about putting a student into a course early, that's going to move at a faster pace than, than the, the grade-level-based course is going to move, we want to have some level of confidence that at the end of that time period, the student is going to achieve the goal that we've set for students in that course, which in the case of mathematics is, we want students to achieve mastery on the algebra regions by the time that they're in eighth grade. Okay, mastery being defined as, as a score of eighty-five or better. And so what we, what's been developed, and this has been developed over a long period of time, I don't want to make it, make it sound as if this is a brand-new development, but it has evolved and it has gotten better and, and been refined over time, is the use of multiple data points to help us make that decision. It's an incredibly difficult choice and process, frankly, to take students who have lived their entire educational lives in an, in, in elementary model, where they're in a single classroom all day, getting all of their instruction from one teacher, now going to a specialized course of study in math, specialized course of study in, in, in science, all of the different transition that goes with middle school, and to say, this student should and this student shouldn't be accelerated in math. So we, we have to have something to hang our hat on that, that feels concrete. And so in order to do that, what's, what's been created over a long period of time is a process that utilizes various points of data that come from different places and that are different types. We use teacher ratings, we use standardized test results, we use ongoing classroom assessments through the, the New York State modules, we've created local assessments. And I say we, really, I'm, I'm saying the Main Street school has done this. It's been very, hasn't been created at the middle school, I don't want to say. And, and in addition to that, there's also a norm reference test there called the Inview Cognitive Abilities Test, that is a, a more broad-based look at student abilities. And so what, and, and so just as an aside, I'm not, I'm going to, I'm going to focus on math, but I just wanted to be known that when we get to students moving from seventh to eighth grade, we've created a system at the middle school that mirrors that process in, to a great degree, when we're making decisions about placements in Earth Science. But what, what happens as part of that process is we look at students across all of those areas, and then we make a determination as to student placement based upon their composite score. So not saying, well, this one score is, is this, and so the student should be or shouldn't be in, in accelerated course. We actually make the decision based upon the totality of the score. And if you look at the chart here, this is just a small snip from our, our, our spreadsheet in which we, we compile all this data. And you can see the scores up at the top there, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, and then there's one of twenty-three, and then twenty-two and below, and they're shaded differently. The ones that are shaded are students that were ultimately placed into the accelerated course, the ones at twenty-two and below are ones that were placed into the Math Six course. And, and what I think is important to say is that there are pieces of data for each of the students who were not placed in the course that are, at least as it looks on the chart there, just as strong or almost as strong as those for students that were, that were placed in the course. And there were some places where students, some students that were placed in the course weren't as strong as others, but in, on the whole, they ultimately, you know, shook out in, in the total score the way that they did. So what, what I've done, and what we've done really over the last couple of years, is say, well, what, what can we make? what, what can we make of this? How well is this tool working for us with respect to putting students into the right place and making decisions about students' placement for math that's going to really carry forward from six to seven to eight, assuming that students remain at a relative level of success? And so, a couple of things have come to mind. In order to do that, and I could go into a lot of different points in this, but I'm gonna focus in on one or two things. I'm gonna focus in on, first on, the fact that there are students who are placed into the course based on the data that we have on the way into sixth grade, and then there are students who are offered the opportunity to move into the course later on based upon their in-class performance in sixth grade. Those students are moved in having taken the exact same course for a period of time as their fellow sixth graders who started in the accelerated course, but their prior data wasn't as positive with respect to that placement. Over the course of two years, what we see is that students who are placed into the course initially perform about ten percent better on the final exam than the students who move in, that they're, they have a, about a thirty percent higher frequency of one or more marking periods where their grade, their grade in the class drops below a B, which the B is the level that we expect students to maintain, to remain in the accelerated program. And so, those have been, we've internalized those as indicators that the students who are placed in the course initially by the data that we've collected are actually appropriately placed, and the students who are moving in later, whose data was not as suggestive that they should be placed in the course, were appropriately placed in many cases in the Math Six. That's not to say that we don't have students who are somewhat later bloomers, who are able to succeed in the course, we know that that's the case, and that's why we maintain the system that we maintain. But in saying that, I think it's important to note that we've developed an even greater level of confidence based on this data study than we already had, kind of based on just our overall instinct, I guess I would say. The other thing that's of note, and I'm not gonna belabor it too much, is, we also found enormous value in the InView test. And so, the InView test is a cognitive abilities test, and we take a composite score from that to put onto this rubric. It measures verbal, non-verbal, and quantitative reasoning in students. And, so it's not just a math test, it's not a content-based test, but what we've noticed is that, and this was a stark, stark indication for me, in last year's cohort, there were fifty-six students who were in the accelerated course at one point or another, either were initially placed or were moved in at some point. All but one of them scored in the seventy-fifth percentile or higher on the InView test, and the one that didn't was, I think it was a seventy-second percentile. And so, when we are looking at some borderline results, and you can see some borderline results up there, those two students that scored the twenty-twos, well, they were borderline and they were right in that seventy-fifth percentile and above, so they were truly borderline. I wouldn't be surprised, you know, I don't know the names of those students, they might have been students that ultimately got moved in or had the opportunity to do so. But what we've come to find is, that is one of the better predictors that we have on the rubric. We don't overweight it or anything like that, but when we look at a student who's on the cusp, who's on the borderline, that is something that we've begun to go to now. And by the way, those results were repeated almost identically this year, just a couple of more students who didn't have that seventy-fifth or above. So that's become a more reliable predictor for us in terms of making decisions about that student that could go either way. I think this is, I put this in the presentation mainly because I wanted to illustrate how, you know, knowing that we're gonna be talking about RTI, knowing we're gonna talk about how we're supporting students who struggle, how are we using data to look at students who are on the other end, who are potentially accelerating their program? And I think that it's really important to understand that the process for making that decision goes beyond the experience of any one's school year. We're looking at students who are gonna succeed in that class, gonna continue to succeed in the following year, and on down the road, and beyond the middle school and into high school. That's what we're trying to do through that program, and that's the purpose of acceleration. World Language.
So very excited to share the work of our World Language Department. As you know, for the past five years, our World Language teachers have embarked on quite a journey of redesigning all of their curriculum and units of study, and putting speaking and listening at the forefront. Our goal at the middle level is for a student to leave us at the end of eighth grade and really be able to engage in conversation in the target language that they're studying. So, this chart probably looks very familiar. When we embarked on this journey, we had to determine what is the proficiency, the speaking proficiency target for the end of each grade level. This is based on the ACTFO, the American Council of Teaching Foreign Languages, it's based on their standards. But you can see at the middle level, the goal is for the student to be at the intermediate low by the time he or she exits. Along with the identified speaking targets, we have the World Language Speaking Performance Assessment Rubric. This is also based on the ACTFO standards. This helps a teacher understand what are those differences in terms of skills that a student needs as he or she shifts from one level to the next. This is only half of the rubric, but I just wanted to put it there as a placeholder, so you can see the progression of communication skills, vocabulary and comprehension skills that a student will demonstrate in the spoken language as he or she progresses across the levels. We recently, a few weeks ago, received our Apple, that is, the assessment that is now being administered seventh through twelfth grade to all of our students who take a language. You can see on the screen, and I'll have in a moment a similar screen with our French results, that in seventh grade, we just took the, students took it, this was our second year, when we look at eighth grade, it's very interesting, because we have four years, so we really feel like we can draw some strong conclusions from that data. What we wanted to point out is, when you look at the 2016 results, those are students who did not have this new curriculum, this new approach to instruction. When you look at the students in 2019, those are students who, over the past three years, have experienced this new curriculum. So we see this as a measure to really assess, how's our program working, how's the curriculum working that we developed, how's the professional development that teachers have engaged with? And so if you look at the bottom row, highlighted or shaded in gray, both the seventh, but I really wanna draw your attention to eighth grade, you can see that the number or the percent of students who were at or exceeding their target level increases from 2016 to 2019. And I'm just gonna show you the, oops, sorry, the French data, so again, if I can draw your attention to the eighth grade and that shaded gray, you again see, and this is even a greater increase in terms of the percentage of students that are at or above that target level. So from this, we are feeling confident that this new approach to teaching, that the curriculum, that all the professional learning, that all of our language teachers have been immersed in over the past five years, is working. So in addition to looking at a grade level as a whole, so that broader lens, each teacher also gets the individual target level that each of his or her students scored at. What's really unique about our World Language Department is, they are a great example and a model for a group of teachers who are really interested in looking at data. They recently spent a half a day, facilitated by our amazing department chair, Ms. Tempest, and our consultant, looking at this Apple data. They looked both through their broad lens, so they looked for implications, what do we notice from seventh to eighth, eighth to ninth, et cetera, and then they drilled down and they looked at individual students. And the prompt for them was, in a small group, to choose five students from one or of their classes, whose performance surprised them. And then they listened to that student's audio file and collaboratively talked through, using that rubric, why do we think the student scored at this performance level? And I recently spoke to one of our eighth grade teachers, who told me that she was really surprised that one of her students underperformed, those are her words, and she said, it was fascinating, when she listened to his audio file, she said, he's speaking in paragraphs, he has control of the present tense, he's asking questions, those are all skills of an intermediate speaker, but her aha was that he had missed part of the prompt. And so, it's a prompt, obviously, that's auditory. And so, he heard a snippet, the prompt was really, look around the room you're in, describe the books that you see in the classroom. He heard books that you see, he chose like his favorite book, and so his conversation was all about a Harry Potter text. So the aha for her was, all right, what is this telling me about my instruction? How do I need to shift my instruction? She said, you know what, I always have the prompt when she engages her kids in conversation on a day-to-day basis. She said, I say it, but I also always have it written. So she said, I obviously need to start to pull away that visual support, so that they're a hundred percent focusing on the listening, so that they're really tending to the prompt. So again, his response was somewhat connected, but not fully connected, and that's why his score was rated lower, even though he had all those masterful skills in terms of his speaking abilities, like the tense and stuff like that. So, again, they had such an amazing day that they've decided as a department that every May, they're gonna take a half a day, and they're really going to look into this Apple data with the goal of drawing conclusions and saying, how can this inform my practice, our collective practice, moving forward? So, it's a really nice example of data diving, as they like to say.
So, here's opportunity to circle back and ask some questions about this really informative presentation. Thank you very much. Does somebody wanna take a, start?
I was asking the other question, should I continue?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the one thing I wonder about is, you know, I have questions from way back early on, do others?
Can you just give a quick?
So I'm just gonna say, your question is from early on in the presentation, 'cause if not, I think that we should work our way forward a little bit.
Go ahead.
So, does somebody from early on have?
I have no questions. No.
I did, sure. The problem, I apologize, I have one, just one. It's more feedback than it is a question. I wrote it down. In the, I guess it is a question. If you go back to slide, page fifteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, sort of the program analysis slide, I just, I mean, less a question and more just a thinking out loud feedback piece. I think when I see this, I love seeing this model, it's very clear and easy to sort of map out, and I'm really happy, 'cause I know that this is something that we put into play coming into this year, so I love to, I'm curious about the evolution of it. And so, like, I look and I just want, I wonder about the outcome boxes and how we can get to a place where they're a little more substantial. You know, like, I look at the PLTW, and I'm just thinking forward more like, the results, I see that we're looking at enrollment, right, to see how that course is moving. I mean, do we need to wait two, three years to start collecting data and thinking about how this program works? I mean, this is what I was thinking about, like, could we start doing that next year and why not? You don't have to answer that, I'm just putting it in the air. And then, the idea that, you know, how does this PLTW, so now we're K-12, right, and one of the things that I think we should start thinking about is, like, sort of, the idea that STEM shouldn't necessarily live in a silo, because it involves mathematics and it involves science and involves, in some cases, language arts and to the case. You know, I wonder if we could sort of figure out how to start to work up, you know, integration, right, like, seeing, like, I wonder, more data, data could be so useful to think about how these kids might be doing in mathematics and science as it becomes applied to, right? So I thought that would be a good place to raise that.
The question you're raising is?
Less a question.
No, but it sounds like it is, or a suggestion, which is, you're, they have a program which is PLTW, which is specialization courses are elective, and you're espousing a philosophy that says that, why wouldn't this be integrated into all their other?
Kind of, more like, the idea that PLTW is a very core STEM program, as we've seen through the rollout over the last several years, right, and it lives in sort of this special room, like, the PLTW room, and it's PLTW, and kids know what they're doing, and it's an excellent, you know, place for them to go. But it also applied, the stuff that goes on in PLTW applies to mathematics and applies to science and applies to ELA in a lot of different ways, when you look into the curriculum and see how it gets taught. And so, I wonder if, in this program evaluation and in the data piece that I'm blown away by that we've come so far with, is to start thinking about, how can I, and that's why sooner, rather than later, right, like, how can I look at some data here that shows me maybe how this course helps affect other courses to strengthen or pull back, you know, just, yeah.
And I'll jump in too. I mean, along the same lines, when I see the chart and we're in eighteen, nineteen, I saw results, and I see that you collected feedback from students, and you've collected feedback from teachers teaching the course. So my question to you is, how you doing? That's really what I was looking to hear tonight. I understand that thirty-six percent of our eighth graders are taking one course, but how'd it go?
Well, so, I mean, I think I would share, the feedback from our teachers has been that the first year of implementation has been one that has been met with both challenge and enthusiasm. Challenge in the sense that it's, you know, there's a lot of training that goes on for the course, and then there's the actual implementation of teaching the course. And one of the feedback pieces from teachers with respect to the PLTW gateway program, at the very least, has been that the training provides enough of a course for, they call it a nine-week course every day, enough for an eighteen-week course every day, right, and so forth. So the learning for teachers is, how do I get the most out of this experience for students? How do I ensure that we address the knowledge and skill that's critical for students to truly engage with this, with this content at a deep level, within the timeframe that I have in which to work it? So, coming out of year one, where we are on that is actually saying, okay, we know that there's these really rich tasks that we want students to engage with, we have some ideas now about where we can pull in some of the knowledge that they might have gained in science class, for instance, that I don't have, you know, in fact, I had a conversation with the Energy and the Environment teacher, who also teaches science, who said, next year, I don't have to teach X, Y, and Z, 'cause I know they either got it or they're about to get it in science, and that's not gonna be something that takes three days next year, and as a result, I'm gonna be able to do this that I couldn't do this year. So there's an example of some of the feedback there. So when you ask how we're doing, for me, that's indicative of doing well in the sense that we've learned a lot in this first year. You know, with respect to students, when we see students, and we didn't have, I don't wanna present it as we had, you know, dozens of students, we had a few students, single digits, but the fact that it happened at all was, students who said, you know what, I don't have to take another course, but I wanna take another course. That's some feedback, that's, you know, voting with your feet kind of a thing, saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give up, you know, a free period, a study hall, or whatever it is, in order to try this green architecture course after having taken the Energy and the Environment. That's indicative of that. And then, you know, the other piece, as I said, I think a little bit later on, in terms of how we're doing, is seeing the work that students produce. I had the opportunity to watch students present their work in each of the three courses this year. And I can say that, in each of those cases, there was a level of technical knowledge that students would not have had, had they not taken the course. There was a level of production that I haven't seen before in the middle school in that particular area. So I would rate that as a success, and with, combined with the other two pieces there, particularly from the teachers, looking at it as room for growth in year two.
Okay. And in terms of the numbers, I, we don't have to go through how many students took each class, but I think that would be of interest, obviously, next year.
Sure.
I know that you say you're gonna be analyzing the enrollment data, but I won't be here next year, but I think knowing what the size of the program was this year and then what, how it grew next year, for this year, you know, I would be interested in knowing, I mean, do we have, how many, just in general, for these courses, how many kids did you have?
So we had, so thirty-six percent of our eighth grade is about, actually, hey, I have one exact number. A total of forty-six students take one or more courses.
Great. And so, what is the goal, I mean, and this is my, this is where I was going with it, what is the goal and how does it connect with Earth Science being offered in eighth grade? Because I would think that at some point, that's a conversation that's gonna happen at the middle school. I mean, you, how many, we only have so many students, we have these wonderful offerings, they're not the same, I get it, that different kids may be attracted to accelerated Earth Science as opposed to this, but there's also probably gonna be students who wanna take both, and as you said, the schedule's only so limited. Is the expectation here with this program that will always offer earth science and this? Or is there some, is that part of the conversation and the analysis that's going to be done?
So there's no, there's no intention at this point that we would discontinue offering one or the other. I think, I think some, to some extent, student interest will drive that. What I think I would want more, Deb, is I would like to see us be in a place where students are making choices as to what is most interesting and compelling to them. And that doesn't just include earth science or PLTW. It also includes studio art, it also includes performing music. There has been a time, there was a time, and hopefully we're moving past that time, where students took things, I think, by default. These are the things that were offered and it was either that or a study hall. And either, you know, my parents weren't going to let me take a study hall or they wanted me in the band or whatever it is. And so the goal is by the time students are leaving middle school, that they're making choices that speak to their level of interest, their level of passion, and that provide the opportunity for them to broaden their horizons. And so that's why I think it's important just to know, I don't know that we're going to see, you know, hockey stick growth in a number of students taking these courses. And by the way, I don't know that we could sustain that with the staffing we have, right? So, but what I do want to see is I want to see students actively making the choice. This looks interesting to me. This looks like something that I would like to spend, you know, every other day for the next, you know, semester doing and giving that a shot and then having, you know, an experience that informs what they want to do next when they go to high school. That, to me, is the ultimate.
No, that's very helpful, so that is the goal. That's really what I was trying to understand when I was looking at it before the presentation is what is the goal? I see where you're headed, but, you know, what is the objective?
If I, if we were to see those numbers drop off, then that would be telling us that this is not the right way to go or something's not working with the program that we've got. That would be an indicator for us.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that my understanding was that the first time it was rolled out, there were some issues with communication about what was available and that that is improved this year in terms of that. And I just wanted to say, well, I was looking at the website for the district and I saw that now on the middle school page, you've got the grade-by-grade course of study, which is something that had been an area of interest because it really shows parents what's being given in every grade in great detail. And the only thing I would suggest is if you could provide more details about these electives, it might help parents have conversations with their children about what those choices are. I know you have the eighth grade orientation and all that, but also, you know, someplace where they can go. It's on the website, it's very accessible, and I think that's a great development. I did want to ask, what's your vision for seventh grade? I mean, is there a smaller number of study halls in seventh grade than there are in eighth grade? So those would be mixed classes, like seventh and eighth could be together? I just wanted to get a sense of how that might work.
So there are some logistical hurdles with putting seventh and eighth graders together in the classes just based upon when the classes can meet and what else is happening at the different grade levels. There has to be crossover between the grades and when they can take kind of special area classes. And there's relatively few periods in the day where that can actually happen.
So is there more study hall in eighth grade?
There's actually more study hall in seventh grade. Most students in seventh grade have a study hall every other day. Now, what we had in the eighth grade that was the bigger issue was that we had students, if they chose not to take earth science and chose not to be in a performing music, they had a study hall every day, you know, period of the day, every day. And that just felt, you know, that just was unsatisfying in so many ways.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you. The other question I had, just out of curiosity, is when you look at the math six placement and you look at the other accelerated course, earth science, has there ever been an interest or an effort to look and track that student until twelfth grade? Did you find, or are you curious to find out whether that acceleration somehow impacted the choices that the student made in high school or kind of helped direct them? Because like you said, I think that middle school, the reason I'm curious is middle school is the time that the students are exploring and they feel confident and they explore something that they get positive feedback in and they get an interest. Do you find, or are you curious to find out whether that actually sparks an interest that carries through to twelfth grade?
So the curiosity is always there, there's no question. I think I would be, well, I have not done a detailed enough study to give you a really good answer on that. I have some cursory answers that probably shouldn't be, you know, speculated upon.
The same, I guess, would be true for world language. It is the assessment that you're seeing and targets being met somehow also continuing, also to spark an interest to the point where by twelfth grade, we're seeing students who are taking AP courses and, you know, continued growth and interest.
So I know, I'm sure that Dave and Matt will talk to that, but I would want to just say, you know, as we launched onto this program from a six, twelve basis, it was the goal to have kids doing more and walking out as fluent speakers, right? So that's, that is something that's shared from the entry point all the way to the exit point.
But we've always had such high participation in languages that I don't think we ever expected it. I mean, I think over the time, I know Dave and Matt will talk to the increase in AP and at times decrease and sometimes increase, so we're always looking to do that. But we have so many kids who take obviously Spanish and Latin, French and Latin. So I think our goal really was around the fluency point, not so much increasing the numbers as much as really having a goal for our program when a student exits our schools.
Thank you very much.
I have a question on the reading intervention example, so if you have something.
So just a quick statement about the area we were just in, which is around the program assessment and the different initiatives over the few years. Some of the data that was just asked for was similar, I had similar questions. And when we're looking at the analysis of individual students, you have a lot of it. I'd love to see some of it in the actual document. So I was really gratified, I was, when you took that moment of pause with the elevating instructional practice, you then answered the question I was ready to ask. So that was perfect in terms of, you know, when are you having these conversations? When are you having reflection? And then something that, there's a question I was asking two or three years ago is exactly the answer today, which is as you walk through during the observational rounds or looking at, you know, our practice reflections, you're seeing the work. And that's really gratifying to work in. So that was excellent, I just love to see some of that in the document case, you know, someone's not able to watch the videos. But really, really excellent.
Can I capitalize on the foreign language piece real quick? Just, I just, can you explain twenty-eight, twenty-nine? What's that data mean? I just didn't. Owls.
Yeah.
Apples.
So twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so this is where I'll jump in.
Can I just, I ask, so that's say seventy-four to seventy-five are at or above target in twenty eighteen. So ninety-nine percent of kids were at or above target, right? Seventy-five kids were enrolled in the Spanish in seventh grade? Then the following year, you had seven more kids, am I reading this right?
Yeah.
You had eighty-two kids, but we had, we were ten percent less.
Right.
So my question, am I reading that right?
That's right.
So we didn't do as well the next year?
So, no, so this is this year and then twenty eighteen is last year. So that's the seventh grade scores. So I think it's important to do a couple of things. First off, recognize that with the seventh grade scores, this is only our second year of giving the assessment in seventh grade. So establishing a meaningful data trend there is something that has yet to actually occur. The other thing that I'd say that's unique about seventh grade, it is the first full year in which students are actually taking, taking a language, having had it as an every other day class in sixth grade. So I, you know, I mean, last year, we couldn't have done any better, just about, right? We have ninety-nine percent, seventy-four out of seventy-five students at or above target. So I, you know, obviously, we were really happy last year. I think if we had gotten the numbers this year that.
It's still pretty good.
We would have been happy last year with those numbers. So it's a little bit harder to look at when you, when you look at last year's number in comparison. But I think we were trying to wait a little bit out on that and see what trend develops a little bit more over time. I think what we wanted to point out, though, was, and looking at this assessment data as a way of kind of assessing how our program is doing, how our curriculum has worked out, how our PD has been effective, is looking at the impact between, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and then you see the jump twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen at our exit point, which is in eighth grade, where we see students, you know, seeing a substantial move at those meeting or exceeding the target and a huge move in those students who are actually exceeding the target. You look at forty-eight point six, fifty-eight percent exceeding the target in twenty sixteen and seventeen, going up to seventy-three and seventy percent in eighteen and nineteen. That's, that group in twenty nineteen, this year's eighth grade, is the first cohort that has had the newly developed curriculum for all three years, right? So that's, that's a, you know, a data set there that is certainly one that shows that we're seeing the impact that we want to see over time.
I look forward to seeing, I think you said about the trend, like, I look forward to seeing how that trend plays out. And then, the reason I know that the board is interested in seeing this stuff is because then it says, well, how do we get better, right? And how do we make the teaching better or the students, you know, how do we get the students to be more motivated? Or whatever it might be that your, the data's telling you. I would suggest that you're putting in a three, four and five early world language program that's going to focus on Spanish and French. I would make the suggestion upfront now that you track the data so that you can see which kids participated, do well here. I just think that this is the beginning of something really robust for the district.
Just want to clarify, though, our goal at the elementary level is not language proficiency. So we don't expect a correlation between them.
And I really love the example you did give about the teacher making the observation about a practice that could be changed based on, I mean, that he got.
Having access to the audio files is, that's great.
Yeah.
Critical.
More of it.
Maura?
I wanted to also say how interesting it was to hear about the way that, the way that even foreign language, you know, even the common review of an audio file could be so instructive. And it's, you know, it's fantastic to hear about the practice in addition to the numbers.
Beth, if your question is related to language, you want to ask it first?
No, not, I wanted to talk about the data development team.
Okay, I am back then to, back to, excuse me, the intervention, sixth grade intervention. You'll forgive me, but I often want to take the, I want to both compliment you on anticipating the, I know based on, on questions that you get consistently on needing to talk about acceleration as, and how those decisions are made. Because it is, you know, it's one of those hot button issues, I think, for parents with kids who are developing. But then on the other side, I think one of the toughest things for parents probably to understand, not having any yet in, in sixth grade myself, is to understand those interventions, the thresholds and so on at which kids need to perform below to get those services. And then I think, I think it's also mystifying sometimes when you describe the student with a B in the class who is really bottoming out in the winter. And I think it's really, if you could, can you talk generally about how these things can happen? Because it is.
Don't match, right?
Right.
Yeah, I definitely want to hear more of the story of that student.
Or about.
Or examples of how that switch occurs.
So in terms of like a grade, first of all, I would say like overall, as we think of sixth grade as a transition year. You know, the grades, and for those of you who've had a child or maybe more than one, you know, go through the middle school, you know, grades tend to be relatively high in sixth grade. I think what's also important to think about, when you think about a grade, children are getting, like, a portion of their grade is attributed to their effort, to their homework completion. So there's a lot of other factors that aren't about specific skills, in this case, like reading skills, right? That factor into a quarter grade or, you know, a grade, a cumulative grade across the year. So I'm not sure more if that actually answered your question or if you want to follow up. Because I want to answer your question.
I just want to add one thing to that. I think it's also important to note the timing of all this. So the winter data team meeting is in late January, which means that we're looking at first marking period grades. It would be the only grades that would be available at that point in time. So that's, you know, Alison talked about how the transition of sixth grade oftentimes will bring about a, a little bit of a friendlier rating process. We're not looking for students to come into the middle school and in their first marking period, establish grades out of the gate that feel pure. That's just not, that's counter to what we're trying to accomplish. Not to say that they're false, it's just what they're graded upon at that time is going to be, is going to get progressively harder as time goes on, I guess is the way that I would say it. So it's not crazy to me that a student could come in, get a B in ELA in the first marking period, and by the time things have begun to get more difficult, challenges with whatever transition is going on, by the time they take a winter ENSWEP assessment, beginning to see some decline in those grades. That would be, that would be an issue.
Well, I have to say, I was really happy to hear how you have, like, for example, you said for that student who, I feel like those are the students that kind of fall between the cracks, kind of, and they get on through their middle school years and their high school years and then when it really starts getting difficult, they just, you know, tank. So I feel like because you, you said, I wrote it down, they meet, even though their grades are fine, they're meeting two or more of your criteria. So you're kind of giving them a little bit of support early on and hoping to correct a few things and then off they go. So I feel like this is wonderful to hear because you're probably getting a certain very specific set of kids that just need a little extra support and can help them fly. So I think that's wonderful.
And I just want to say too, this is a particularly interesting case study because now that we have RTIM Direct, which is where all of the RTI documentation from our elementary colleagues is visible to all of us. When I dug deeper on this young man, he was actually in an RTI group for reading support earlier in fifth grade, then he met the criteria and was exited. So he, you know, and then he came to middle school and he, you know, met the criteria in the fall, but then had that dip, which I also, when I think about, you know, reading at the middle level, the increase in terms of nonfiction and reading across the content areas is another like level of challenge that students begin to face, more so than even at the elementary. So it was, it was really critical for us to, you know, intervene as soon as we recognized he was starting to, you know, move backwards in terms of his reading skills.
Just want to piggyback in terms of, you mentioned how it helps, you're perhaps using this in terms of helping integrate new students, which, you know, one observation I had had just personally was going through, it was open house or something and things are so scaffolded. So, you know, teachers are saying, oh, again, you know, kids know this because they did X and Y last year. Except for the new student who wasn't here. So to hear that he can identify where a new student might need help.
Which is important because sometimes when a new student arrives, we don't have a lot of like records in terms of like their history. And so this is a quick, quick way to just get one data point. It's not the end-all, be-all, as we know, but it's a starting point for us.
And I wanted to piggyback on what Michael said and say that in terms of data team development, by including attendance and discipline referrals, you have another measure to show why you might have some of these disparities that also lends some, sheds some light sometimes on SEL issues, which we talked about at other meetings. So I want to.
Absolutely.
No, that's, that's, I'm sorry.
So thank you.
No, because attendance is not only not being present at school, but it also could impact if a child is in a support class and then they're not getting those tier two or tier three supports. So it's like twofold, which is why we're really being vigilant in terms of looking at attendance and, you know, responding appropriately, is an issue.
I had a question related to that ENSWEP report, grade six reporting, reading report, which we've seen a similar, as you mentioned, a similar report from the K-5 presentation. So I was surprised that the number was so low regarding the need for intervention because there's been substantially higher in the Southland example. And then this is another example, you've seen the ELA scores, where there's a chunk of students who, who, you know, didn't do as well perhaps. Why do we think the number was so low in this case? And it seems to me there should be correlation between those and that the number would be higher, but that's not.
Higher where?
In terms of the need for intervention in grade six.
You're thinking there should be like a higher percentage of students in like the high risk or the moderate, right?
Yeah, at least moderate, that's correct. It seems, I'm really just surprised.
I mean, I can say. No, no. I mean, sometimes I'll attribute it to the cohort because if I, you know, had showed you the transition report for seventh grade reading, it would not have been a mirror image of this. There would have been more students or there are more students in the, in the moderate and the high risk. I think for us, this is a helpful report in terms of seeing where students, like where they start originally in terms of their tier, and then do they move? And hopefully, you know, if you're in the red tier, the high risk, hopefully, as we see, you know, in the transition details visual, you see the movement of some of those students like across the years as they, as they take the assessment, so.
Well, I appreciate you said, you know, the idea of differing by cohort because I think that's another, at least it's very interesting, a number of members of board, not the board, to see how we can help or what work we can do to help on cohort basis. Because for a high TV district, how do we move the areas where we can support students and help?
I have a question. The INVIEW test, you had said it was a really good reliable predictor. Can you tell, can you? Can you tell, can you speak a little bit more about that test?
I, I think what I, what I was saying there, Maria, was, was that we found that the students who ultimately were placed in the, in the accelerated course, while they might have, you know, gotten threes or fours from their teachers with respect to their conceptualization or their work habits, while they might have gotten threes or fours or sometimes twos, you know, in, in one or more of the other assessments, what they universally got were, were fours, meaning that they were in that 75th percentile or above on the INVIEW test.
Right. What's the INVIEW test?
The INVIEW test is a nationally normed cognitive abilities test. It's not a locally developed assessment. It's something that, that measures students' cognitive abilities in the areas of verbal, nonverbal, and quantitative reasoning.
So you give that to the students who were interested in taking or everyone takes it?
Everyone takes it in fifth grade.
In fifth grade. It's not at middle school. It's in fifth grade.
Oh, it's in fifth grade?
We've been doing it probably from, I would say fifteen, almost maybe.
More than five years, yeah.
Almost fifteen years.
So it's just one data point.
That's right.
It's one data.
Thank you.
So this isn't something new. I didn't understand that. Okay.
Yeah, it's sort of part of the math. That's what I was going to ask if you thought, I don't know if you think this would not be a good idea, but in light of the fact that there's this math rubric that includes all those data points, if that's something you would also want to put on the website to sort of let people know. I don't know if that opens a whole can of worms.
So we go into pretty deep detail when we explain the math rubric through our orientation process. I go into deeper detail for, for parents who are interested in getting more information about it. You know, I, I think that.
No, I think that's a good point. I forgot about that. Yeah, it's, it's gone into, yeah.
Right.
And, and all the parents are at those meetings.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
I just did, I did want to ask one question, which is, you know, in terms of, I liked the number, the number of examples of how this information is shifting, how it's supposed to, and how instruction is being implemented and potentially could be invested. In last year's presentation, another trustee raised a question related to instructional grammar, and it was about if there was some challenges there, and I was hoping for an update in terms of the work that might be connected around grammar. I think if you have ready at this time, we could do an update.
I mean, I, and I'll say very briefly, there's been a follow-up this year to work that was done, actually was supported through a grant. We had a consultant come in and work with our students and our teachers on promoting the, the value and the importance and the role of grammar in, in, in writing. Actually, did, did grammar workshops with students and with teachers, teachers as, as a follow-up to that. I think there's a chair with anyone. And so, and, and so as a follow-up to that, there were, there was a cohort of teachers that did some summer work to look at units of study and, and look at where grammar instruction, explicit grammar instruction would be best infused into those units that they're continuing with, with the summer. So it is, it is on there. It's certainly work that's ongoing at, at, at different points in different grade levels. I think the, the big challenge is always is, is saying, how do we make grammar instruction feel like it, it's, it's not, you know, to use a word that Mr. Graber used earlier, not in a silo, right? That, that is something that is, that is along with and, and, and integrated with the writing instruction as opposed to something that's separate.
My final question on that one would be, is there an assessment, what assessments do you have for writing? There's ELA and those, writing assessments?
So the writing assessments that we have at this point are, are the, the classroom assessments that teachers are utilizing, and then any additional writing that students do via, via final exams, things like that.
It just strikes me, just thinking, listening to Michael's questions about the grammar, the mechanics of writing, grammar of writing, it just, you know, your response was you didn't want it to be in a silo like by itself. It, it just seems like logically speaking, it's something that should be embedded all the years building through. I mean, even on the standardized test, you know, when kids apply to colleges, it's part of the story because, you know, they're taking an ACT or an SAT, and it's a big chunk of, of, it's a portion of that test that they're graded on, and it's one of, you know, we'll see if colleges go away from using these, these scores as part of the application process as some have been going that way. But it, and, and I've never been an advocate of teaching to the test, but it just seems to me kind of crazy that the mechanics and fundamentals aren't already embedded in part of it, and grammar being part of that story.
So let me, and I, and I, I want to be really careful here. I don't want the takeaway from the conversation here to be that there's not instruction and grammar going on. I, I can think of specific lessons that I observed this year in all three grade levels where grammar was at least a component or in some cases the main, the main component of the lesson, you know, in our ELA classes. I could think of specific student work that received feedback specifically with respect to the grammar and, and the conversations that I had with teachers around how they were doing that. I just, you know, I, I think it's, it's, I would, I would not be telling the truth if I didn't say that it was, you know, it's always a challenge to address grammar as, you know, as you're also addressing writing for, writing to think and, and thinking to write and so forth, right? It's, it's work that's ongoing and, and we always need to get better at. And so my, my comment about having it be integrated and embedded, Maria, is not, not to say that it's not happening and we're just trying to figure out how to do that. It's just, I think Rose is trying to figure out how to do it better.
So in other words, how to do it more perhaps is what you're saying?
How to do it better.
How to do it better. Is that what you just said?
I think what we're seeing though is, you know, the revision of the standards from the Common Core to the next gen has actually been really helpful because the, the Common Core were so dense and really hard to include and then look at all the other standards. So I know we often, we don't really talk about the standards that often, but, you know, speaking and listening and, and language standards, they're all there. They're all part of the next gen standards, but they don't get as much airtime. What's happened now as a result, the next gen standards have been revised, I, I think pretty nicely. They're a little more simplistic. And what I'm seeing at the elementary level, and I know Joyce is working on at Main Street School, is, is embedding that grammar piece more specifically. So now when you look at our unit planners at the elementary level, you'll see more and more teacher, they're now knowing, we need, we need to put our language standards in. So the standard section, we avoided them go, what was happening is those other standards were so dense, the standards were like pages long. It's like no one is teaching to all those standards in a full unit. It's just not possible. So I think what we're seeing, and I, I see it at the middle school as well, is the streamlining to say, which standards are we really working on and how do we make sure we're including all of the standards and not only the reading or writing standards, but also speaking and listening, also the language standards. So I think that the revision has actually allowed teachers to look at it with just a greater fluidity, I think, and, and feeling, make, it feels more doable, I think is what I, what we're seeing. So that was actually a really good revision, so we're definitely seeing more, more attention to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, Matt, you. I'm sorry, actually, do, so instead of having you sit down, I have a question from the audience now? Okay. Sure.
So close.
I'm Erin Bernstein. I'm the parent of a third grader at Dowsley. I just have a quick question. It was a great presentation. I'm just curious, I feel like I heard with the master schedule that we were trying to potentially maybe reduce the number of classes that the students were taking to reduce anxiety since some of the kids had such an increase, had such a large class load or weren't taking any breaks during the high school period. So I'm curious, by taking away the study hall, we're adding a class to the kids' schedules, and I'm curious if there's any, we may not have a sense for it yet, but are we concerned about a risk in anxiety levels as kids now fill up their schedules?
Well, so, I mean, questions for me. So I'll say this. So here's what I'll say. You know, I think it's important to note, for a long time, many of our students have had a full schedule. So it's not a question of, of, you know, all of our students have these big holes in their schedule and we're trying to get rid of them. I think what we're looking at is this, students are only in school for so many hours in a day. And in, in the course of those hours, we want to provide the most engaging, enriching, excellent learning opportunity that we can for them. And, and then final analysis, a forty-two minute study hall doesn't seem like it fits that description for us. That's not to say, by the way, that study halls have gone away or, or are going away in their, in their entirety. I think what we're looking to do is reduce the amount of time that students are sitting in one of the, one of those study halls and, and put in place of that something that's going to open the door for them, open an opportunity, arouse their interest or, or perhaps pursue an interest that they've already, you know, had a bit that, that, that they haven't had a chance to, to do yet. That's done through some choice. They choose which of these they want to take, and that's inclusive of some of the other courses, whether they be accelerated or not. And, and that ultimately, to me, is, is something that allows our students to walk away with a greater degree of agency and a greater degree of engagement in the school as a whole.
Have we seen any change in anxiety levels at all? Is it too early to really assess that, Dave?
I, I certainly wouldn't say that we've seen anything that we would attribute to having taken one of the specialization courses as a, as a relates to anxiety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice job. I think the floor is really yours, gentlemen. Yeah. Matt, I'm here to warm us up with a couple jokes before we go.
I don't know if you've heard Matt's earth science routine, but he's.
Rock solid. Rock solid work.
Time for the periodic table.
How's Amy?
Miss Warren.
If you've ever heard his pre-calculus routine, he'd really have you rolling. So, good evening. Some of the slides are going to look familiar and some of the themes are going to look familiar, and I think it'll be nice to be able to share some of the extension from our middle school colleagues and some of the same data they're capturing. So in the first slide, we lay out over the last three years, our focal points around the instructional practices at the high school as well. And, you know, obviously this journey's been going on for six years, and the consistency that we start to see throughout our district really comes back to the curriculum mapping and the UBD work that we've done, and we start to see consistent themes, but we also see them implemented in slightly different ways at each of the schools. So back in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, as an instructional practice goal and a design goal at the high school, we were really looking to see essential questions and closing activities becoming more prominent. So if you can recall back, we spoke at length three years ago about how we had seen patterns of, with such an intense content focus at any, in any high school as well as our own, a tendency at times to see sort of a pattern of lessons sort of flowing from day to day without necessarily clear beginning, middles, and ends. So one of the things that we were focused on three years back was working with teachers to design closing activities and why, ways to really try to end today's lesson and transition into the next day's lesson. So through that, in the planning, the ability to try to tie those in with essential questions became important, obviously how we were developing those essential questions became important. And then obviously how that related in general to the work of the unit planner and how units were progressing. Last year, we came back to you and we talked about the extension of those closing activities because one of the things that we had seen was that we saw teachers consistently starting to put closing activities at the end of lessons, but we were starting to see a lot of similarities. And in the very beginning of tonight's presentation, Rain had talked to you about our work around making the distinction between the four learning goals. And this started to become an added layer of focal point at the high school last year. So by helping teachers really start to better understand whether or not they had a lesson that was more focused on knowledge, skill, meaning-making, or transfer, allowed for Matt and I to be able to work with our teachers and eventually get them to better identify the types of closing activities that they would have. So what I mean by that is, in any given day, a teacher may develop a lesson that's more heavily focused on knowledge. There's just a lot of information maybe in that one lesson that they need to be able to deliver and for students to be able to acquire. And if you're delivering more of a knowledge-heavy-based lesson, then creating a closing activity that might be a series of multiple choice questions to be able to quickly assess for knowledge might be really appropriate. If you're doing something that's more of a meaning-making lesson where you really want students to be able to expand out more of their thinking rather than to demonstrate that they were acquiring information throughout that lesson, then those same multiple choice questions would be poorly aligned. It wouldn't be the right mix. So something that's maybe more of a writing activity and/or an open-ended question, even through discussion and dialogue, would be a more appropriate exit ticket. So those are the types of things that we were focused and working with our teachers around last year. And then this year, what Matt and I really entered the year was this concept of really trying to get our high school teachers to think of lessons as episodes. And this concept of episodic learning became the, one of the major themes at the high school this year. In fact, we did some professional development exercise with our teachers earlier in the year where we asked them to start to consider the difference between a mini-series and a, and, and a, mini-series and a, don't mean any of that. A sitcom? A movie. So like a full movie versus, versus a mini-series. And, you know, it's just that. In a, in a movie, things progress out for two hours at a time, and it's a long story told out in a single event. As opposed to a mini-series, we really break them down into episodes. And we use that to carry forward that that really is what we're looking for when we think of what lessons are each day to day. So this idea of trying to get our high school teachers out of the pattern of just thinking about a unit as a rolling stream of content or a rolling stream of lessons that can sort of take on any shape at any given point in time, holding them to, to their design and their planning to say, what is today's forty-two minutes really look like is, is where the focal point is. One of the things that we've noticed that teachers are becoming better and, and more well-versed in, in this kinds of discussion. And being able to refer back to the four learning goals has been a real key to that. So I, I know in my observation cycles with teachers this year, their ability to talk about how they're planning into a specific meaning-making or where they're seeing both a little bit of skill and a little bit of meaning-making in a lesson, and hence aligning their activities became really important. And just sort of to go back to, to something that I heard Alison just talk about, as we start to get into some slides moving forward about data and, and things like that, in end-of-year reports, we're starting to hear teachers being able to summarize in different ways. So some of it is the summary going back to their closing activities, their understanding of the four learning goals, but we'll also show some information about world language and apple results. And hearing teachers just in the last few days come into end of year and be able to talk to me about their data and make distinctions in their teaching and already thinking ahead to next year is, is pretty inspiring and powerful. So Matt's going to talk about also some of our instructional focuses here and how it relates to assessment.
Thank you. So it's, it's going to be, I think, a little intellectually discordant because when Dave finishes, he goes to eighteen nineteen, I went back to seventeen seventeen again. But, you know, and, and three years ago, when we started our partnership together, we asked the teachers to spend their professional development time really deepening their understanding of different formative assessments they could be using to ascertain the degree to which students had achieved the goals for the lesson in the unit. And we spent a lot of time focusing on how students could be the masters of their own stasis, status vis a vis the coursework. And so, in other words, we were asking to deepen their understanding and, and library of closing activities that they could be using with students for the purposes of elevating their own understanding. But what we came to understand, especially last year and more this year, is that if we haven't clearly articulated a daily object for the students, what they're trying to achieve on this particular forty-two minute episode, it's difficult to name what it is we're trying to see them do at the end of that forty-two minute episode. And the data that we get is slushy. It's difficult to really pull out exactly where the students have succeeded, which strands they've been successful with, and which strands have been more challenging. And so over the last, I would say, year and a half really, we've been trying to link that notion that every forty-two minute lesson had, ought to have a clear, distinct, transparent goal so that a student walking into the room can walk in and within moments, understand, here's what I'm going to try to achieve in the next forty minutes. And at the end of that forty minutes, I will have a very clear sense of the degree to which I was successful with that. That can fuel a lot of conversations both between students and students and teachers. And what's more, when we get to the data later, and the conversation I'm going to be leading you through is going to be about placement, class selections and placement, having that sort of understanding about what the daily and ultimately weekly and unit-wise goals are allows us to really give parents clarity about where. goals are allows us to really give parents clarity about where students are vis-à-vis the goals so that we can name those things that need to be working on independently or with, with tutors. This year's work has been focusing also on post-assessment strategies. So, after I've had a summative assessment, sort of a larger test, what do I do with the information that I've gathered from the teacher? I think very often, we find our students get their scores, they look at the 67 or the 78, and they, they walk away not having really digested anything meaningful. This year, our teachers have done a lot of work in creating activities that follow assessment, where the students actually lead themselves through a self-analysis. Where are my strengths? Where are my weaknesses? And what can I be doing differently based on the information that I've ascertained about my results? So, it varies based on department, but I'm taking, for example, of like our living environment teachers, have our students categorizing their areas of strength and weakness into areas like full conceptual understanding, misunderstanding, miscalculation, and careless error, which in any case, regardless of the outcome, gives teachers and students understanding what they should be doing next, and it also fuels a really important conversation with the AIS support team when students are struggling.
So, we're going to take you through some samples of some of the usage of data that we've seen growing and, and starting to become useful at the high school. And here's just an overview of the things that we're going to talk about. We're going to show some overview of some of the Apple results, results, and talk through some of the examples of what we're hearing about that work at the high school level. Also, similar to what the middle school presented, some work that's going on with the Chief 3000 in our AIS reading classes at the high school. And what's nice about this is it's been pretty traditional and, and commonplace at the high school. For our AIS classes, often to serve as Regents tutorial classes, which serves one level of purpose, but one of the things that we've really talked about over the years is to try to find ways for them to become more skills-based in terms of developing skills so that it's not just to better help students pass a Regents exam or achieve a better result on a Regents exam. And our AIS reading classes are truly an example of where that work has been taking hold. Matt, we're also going to then share some information about the growth of our PLT and computer science programs. I think, again, it complements and extends some of the work that you heard from the middle school around PLTW. Matt's going to present about honor selection process, and then I'm going to show you some work that I had done and started to look at last year as a correlation between AP scores and students' performance data in, in classes. So, let's jump in a little bit. You saw this a few minutes ago, so I'm not going to explain it again, but again, obviously, the same exact rubrics that are being used at the middle school level are obviously the same rubrics because this really carries forward in our full 6-12 program. So, what we saw, and we're going to present to you as a really broad overview, but I'll be able to drill down a little bit with some understanding. So, this shows an overview of the number and percentage of students that are meeting the target or above the target for the entire 9th through 12th Spanish program and the entire 9th through 12th French program, both for 2018 and 2019. So, you'll see, you'll see increases that consistently happen from year to year in both programs. What we saw in the Spanish program, actually, before we get to that, let me back up and say, some of the reason why I think it's important for us just to start by looking broadly is, at the high school level, we haven't fully finished changing the entire curriculum. So, we're, we've still been growing through this, and, and some years are still in its first stage of going to the Apple model. That being said, what shows is pretty consistent numbers, 64.8% to 65, 65.6 in 2019 in Spanish, was something that came actually as a bit of a surprise to our Spanish teachers. They were expecting to see slightly more growth. So, you know, sometimes when you look at data, one of the things that you want to do is you want to be able to sort of use it to pump out your chest and say, "Look, we set a target and we're moving forward." In other cases, I think it can be maybe just as useful to say, you know, "We've set a target and something doesn't feel right, and now we have some really great information to drill down into." So, the Spanish teachers came together as a team and they really started looking through it, and something just didn't feel right to them, and one of the things that they very clearly noticed was that the, the level of performance in our ninth-grade Spanish II classes this year wasn't what they had expected. And what they identified by really exploring through that is that there was a need for them to be able to make subtle tweaks in the curriculum and to make sure that there were certain tense orientations that they needed to do a better job of, and that's specifically teaching into the present tense versus the past tense. And by doing that, they realized that they most certainly did not achieve the numbers that they were expecting and hoping for. But by identifying that now, they are very well-prepared to be able to go into their summer work planning and to make sure that they make subtle tweaks, but really powerful tweaks to the curriculum for next year, and then certainly, the, the expectation is to see an even greater climb in those results next year. In addition, when you look at French, I think this is the type of growth that, you know, we were expecting and hoping to see. Quite frankly, you know, we have a French program that's dependent upon one part-time teacher and one full-time teacher. Our full-time teacher was new to us this year. So, to see this type of growth is something that we're really proud of and certainly proud of the work that she's done, both of our French teachers have done. But to see it climb from 49.5% to 57.3% is something that, you know, we really feel like, A, we're on the right path, and B, having this tool, this, this Apple data is something that's really overhauling and changing our practice at the high school. So, the next slide, it may come across as a lot of data at once or a little bit of a busy chart, so I want to take some time to sort of work, walk you through it. What we're looking at right now is six courses, and you're looking at a four-year, really five-year trend of enrollment, as well as many of these classes result in the potential of students being able to earn college credit. So, these are our three PLTW classes at the high school. Intro to Engineering, which is our entry-level ninth-grade class, Civil Engineering and Architecture, and Principles of Engineering. They don't necessarily have to be taken exactly in that sequence. We want students typically to take Intro to Engineering first, and then they could do the other two in either order, but it's often common for us to see it happen in the order that you're looking at. So, what you'll notice is that, you know, before I came to Irvington High School, we had an Intro to Engineering class. And then, within a couple of years of my arrival, we added the Civil Engineering and Architecture class. And then, three years ago, along the goal and the progression, we wanted to make a full three-year sequence in the Architecture and Engineering program, and we added Principles of Engineering. Each of the classes can result in students being able to earn college credit. The requirement is for them to get an 85 or better in the class and to score what is a six out of 10 or better on the Rochester Institute of Technology exam that's given at the end. And so, a couple of things that you'll notice. Number one, you can see what I think is a, a pretty consistent enrollment trend over the, the five years. So, in Intro to Engineering, you'll see 38 students. We saw a dip in 16, 17 to 25, but then we saw it come back up to 40, 29, 30. Keep in mind, these aren't the only versions of Engineering or Architecture classes that we offer to our ninth graders. So, while we may see some slight changes, we're also seeing pretty consistent numbers of classes that we're offering to our ninth graders in Intro to Engineering each year. And then, you'll see the percentage of those students that, at the end of the year, were able to meet both the 85 and the six out of 10 or better. Similarly, you'll see the enrollment numbers in Civil Engineering and Architecture. We had 19 students in 15, 16, and then we saw it drop down to 11, and then 10, and 12, and 9 for a projection for next year. So, again, we're, we're seeing a pretty consistent number in just over 10 students a year. This is going to be one of those areas that we've talked about in the past, to create specialization, to create an expansion of sequence at the high school. Sometimes, we're going to see some of our courses run at smaller enrollment. I know one of the very first things that I talked to the board about when I became principal was that we often saw what amounted to or what looked like single pathways for students. It was very common for students that considered themselves to be on a high-performance track to see much of that cohort take the same classes as they progressed through their high school career. This slide starts to show an example of choice. Choice that's been created at the high school, and not just choice around a single class here or a single class there, it's choice around program. So, as we really want to start to build out our STEM program, this is an example where, in a small high school, it, it may require some commitment of some of our funds in terms of running classes at, at smaller class size, but it's doable and it can be successful. Similarly, when I came to the high school, we were running an alternating computer science sequence model. So, actually, we had been running just Computer Science I and II, they're half-year classes. So, it really amounts to one year of instruction, and it had been some years since we had run the Computer Science, the AP Computer Science A class. So, we finally showed a commitment of wanting to bring it back, and then the plan was that we were going to offer AP Computer Science A in alternating years with the hope that we would build up a cohort over a year or two years of kids that have come through the Computer Science I, II curriculum and then make them better prepared to be able to take the AP class a year later, in some cases, two years later, but wanting to try to keep those enrollment numbers up. What we started to see was a really nice pattern. We actually expected that we were going to run Computer Science I, II one year and then AP the other year, but we started to see that there was enough for us to do both at the same time, that the years that we ran AP Computer Science A, we still were seeing a great number of kids wanting to sign up for our Computer Science I and II class. And then, two years ago, College Board said that they were coming out with AP Computer Science Principles, a very different type of AP class, and another opportunity for us to be able to get kids enrolled now in a true three-year sequence of Computer Science. So, you'll see in the third to last column, 1819, we had 11 students in the class this year, and last year, we ran the AP Computer Science A with eight kids. So, we were hopeful that we had now created a, a sequence where we would run Computer Science I and II every single year, and then we would run AP Computer Science A in alternating years. And we opened up our tallies for next year, and lo and behold, what we saw was something that really inspired us because right now, we're looking at 34 students that are looking to be enrolled in Computer Science I and II next year, nine students who are looking to be enrolled in Computer Science A, and actually, now, another seven students who are looking to be enrolled in AP Computer Science Principles. So, the hope and expectation is actually that we're going to run all three next year. So, you know, to me, this is a perfect example of where a small school can expand these course offerings, do it with a level of commitment, but also do it with a level of stability that makes things available to students in multiple years and really allows them to expand through the sequence. And just to reiterate through, you'll see a lot of NAs. The NAs are either years where those courses were not offered or where college credit isn't offered. So, Computer Science I and II is not a college credit-bearing class, whereas the AP class is, depending upon how students do on the AP exam, it, it could lead to college credit. So, when you see, for instance, in 15, 16, the 10 students that took AP Computer Science A, and it said 100% of them earned or were eligible for college credit, that means 100% or all 10 of those students received a 3 or better on the, on the AP exam. So, I'm going to let Matt talk a little bit now, and this is the Chief 3000 in the AIS reading program or, or class, and he can talk you through how this data has become meaningful for us as well.
So, an interesting question is, I think, we really use data in, in the building to inform the realities for students in terms of class selection. And I'd like to start off by talking about AIS reading. We offer two different AIS English classes. We offer an AIS reading course, and we offer an AIS course that's really more designed for students who are struggling in English class. And what we're concerned about for students who are going to find themselves in AIS reading is early predictors that students may struggle on Regents exam and who may struggle to be successful in English class over and over again. So, we started off by populating that class for freshmen based largely on New York State scores, but the reality is, in a town like Irvington, we have a lot of non-scores for students, we have a lot of opt-outs, and so, a lot of our information also comes from eighth grade and seventh grade teacher recommendations. Last year, our AIS teacher, who's amazing, started using Achieve 3000 as one of the tools that she was going to use to track student performance. And as my colleague Allison referenced in her presentation this afternoon, this evening, Achieve 3000 is an online resource that tracks students' growth and can be used in a number of different ways. And one of the things that it does is it predicts, it presents a Lexile score for students. And as you can see in the left there in that, I don't know what color that box is, green, is that green, that green box, it gives you an indication of where we want our students to be in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th and 12th grade. And so, when students start the course in ninth, in any of the years, they do an initial pre-diagnostic to determine where they are, and the, they do a midpoint check-in, they do an end-of-year check-in to determine their growth. The truth is, students, I think, would like to be using their time that they're currently using for AIS in different ways. Students want to pursue other electives, they want to have access to things that sit in that same time slot, and giving this ownership of, "This is what your Lexile score is now, here's where you need to be," is powerful information for them. And as you can see, a great majority of our students are either meeting the goal or approaching that goal, which says to them, and the message is loud and clear, because you are in AIS in ninth grade, doesn't mean that you have to be in AIS in 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. There are ways for you to demonstrate that you have mastered the skill set that we're trying to see you develop, and you can use that time differently going forward. The other nice aspect of the Achieve 3000 is that it doesn't just give a number, it gives a, a pretty clear delineated breakdown of where the strengths and weaknesses are for each student. So, a student can know specifically, "My area of weakness is defining words without context." Or, "My area of weakness is making inferences based on limited background." And the, the software, as it goes, continues to train students on those areas of weakness so that over time, the students can see growth in that area. One thing I'd point to as indicator of success is that we, in general, have far more ninth graders than we do 10th, 11th, and 12th graders because, over time, they do place out. And, you know, there's some, there are some results this year that are really incredible. You know, I, I don't want to talk about individual students, but if you look at that, you see some students here who made tremendous leaps and who, as a result of their growth, will have a period in their day next year that they can use to pursue something they find more interesting, and from my point of view, that's culture-changing for, for the building. That puts kids in a place where they feel better about themselves, it gives them access to things that they may have thought earlier in the year they would never get a chance to do. So, I'm really pleased about that. The other end of the conversation is the honors process. So, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the honors process for social studies and the honors process for English, and interestingly, it's really similar, I think, to the AIS conversation, and it links really neatly to what we were talking about earlier, this notion of naming distinct goals in advance of lessons and, and units so that students know where they are. So, we're going to start off with social studies. The teachers this year and last year have been focusing on what we refer to as historical thinking skills and dispositions, those qualities and abilities that successful historians are able to demonstrate on a routine basis, and we use the content as fodder for that learning. And this is a snapshot, excuse me, a small excerpt of the rubric that the social studies teachers use when they're evaluating student writing, and it's the same rubric that's used in the middle school, and it's the same rubric that gets used in ninth, 10th, 10th and 11th grade. So, the language is consistent, the skills are consistent, and students can track their growth over time in each strand. So, the, for example, the reasoning skills is something that we want to see students develop over time, and this rubric here gives a student a sense of where they are in that skill set. So, this is what was used mid-year this year when the social studies department delivered the honors placement writing assessment. So, students do an in-class assessment, and then this tool is used to evaluate that student's work. And at the end, when they get the score back, you know, it's bundled with an, an answer to the question of, "Am I being placed in honors history? Am I being placed in AP World?" And if the answer is yes, well, then I know where my strengths are, and that's great. And if the answer is no, more importantly... And if the answer is no, more importantly, if the answer is, at the moment, we still feel that your skill level is at the Regents level, this gives us a clear indication of what we need to be doing going forward in order to make the leap next year, if that's something that we feel strongly about. It's powerful information for students, it's really powerful information for parents, too, because what it means is that when I'm home with my child now, I know where we need to focus our energies if this is important to us. And maybe the answer, by the way, is, this isn't where we want to focus our energies. Maybe we want to put our energy into making the leap into an accelerated English class, but it's informative, and it helps us to make decisions that are best for students. Here is the overall rubric that's used by the social studies department to make a determination. So, it's not just that one data point to determine whether or not you make it into honors, track social studies. There's teacher evaluation that is talking into more of the soft skills that I think Allison was sort of referring to when she was talking about how grades are not purely based on assessment, as well as report card grades and other data points that come from the middle school. And I think it's actually a really interesting conversation, it comes up a lot at the high school, too, that we have students who perform really well in a classroom, and they get nineties, ninety-fives, and then do less well on the honors assessment, and questions come up, and it's a good question, why is my student getting a ninety-five? The message to me is, my student is performing at a very, very high level, and then the message is also that they're not honors quality, and that's anxiety-provoking and confounding. So, being able to provide this little detail about where the strengths and weaknesses are is valuable, but also, being able to have this be a part of the culture of the curriculum for years and years and years, allows everybody to understand that we can track it over time, so that as early as seventh, eighth grade, a parent can have a sense about whether a student is on track to begin, to the advanced track when they're a little older, because they can start to see the trends. The same thing is true, the same philosophy, oh, I'm sorry. So this slide is a sampling of student outcomes. So, this presents these data points for a cohort of students, and what you'll note is that the cutoff for this year was fourteen. So if a student scored fourteen or better, they were considered a good candidate for honors. Students with thirteen were, by and large, granted a waiver, which was an indication that they could do a second writing assignment to boost their candidacy. Similar process for English. Throughout the high school, the English teachers are using the same brand of writing rubric, which they derived through consultation with our bar consultant. And it's the same kind of conversation, that when you are looking to make the honors leap, you are the qualities that they expect you to have, the organizational qualities, addiction that Maria was referencing before, the conventions, the thesis statement, the choice of evidence and the analysis, these are things that are highly valued by the teachers. And I think what we believe is that, at the grade-level course, students' needs are met to make the leap to honors the following year. So if a student is placed at the grade level, and they are successful in that course, then the following year, that would be an occasion that they can make the leap to the next year. What we are wary of is putting a student in a course where they're unlikely to be successful, because we don't want to put a student in a position to be unsuccessful, and also to potentially put themselves in a situation where they are forced to make a difficult decision about their coursework later.
I mentioned that one of the things I started to do last year was to do some analysis of the correlation between AP scores and class scores. So, a couple of things to sort of frame the work, and then I can explain the slide better, is two things. I know Raina has spoken about some of the work that we have begun to do over the last few years as instructional leaders. So, each of our instructional leaders, K to twelve, has embarked upon data project work. So, this was the basis of my work last year, and the other part that I wanted to put a frame around is, I think it's based on some conversations that, you know, not only are Matt and I having, and have been having beyond the scenes, but quite frankly, I would say an extension of some of the conversations we've had in this room over the last few years, and that's to try to put some context and some understanding around, what do we look at when we're looking at our AP scores? And I think this is just one way, I certainly don't present this tonight to try to say, so this is, you know, some final way of looking at the data, and therefore, this proves something, but I think it starts to put at least an entry point into some interesting analysis. So, anytime you do a technical correlation analysis, what you're really looking to figure out is, is there a clear relationship based on your data between one data point and another? So in this case, we have two, what I would hope to be, corresponding data points. How are kids doing in our AP classes in terms of their final class grade versus how are students doing on their AP tests? One of the awkward pieces of that is that students take their AP tests in May, they get final grades in June, and we don't see AP scores until sometime second or third week of July. So, the ability to start putting it together, and if there is a correlation, it starts to at least speak into some know-how that a teacher could demonstrate that they understand how students are progressing through their class, they're creating some consistency within how they're grading, and then it has some shown alignment to, in anticipation of how students would be able to score on the AP exam. So, a couple of things that you're going to look at in this slide. Number one, I've shown for you a sample of AP Bio scores from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and what you'll see is the score that they received on the exam. So, you'll see a range of two to five based on the individual scores, and then you'll see a class grade and what the student received in the course. So, there again is something called a correlation coefficient, where there's a mathematical formula that's done, and the idea is that if there's a perfect correlation between these two data points, you would get a score of one overall, and when you chart that on a scatter plot, you would essentially see a straight line. So, it would form an exact straight line, and that straight line would demonstrate that there's a perfect correlation between every data point around the two sides. So in this case, our score for AP Bio was a point six-six-one-two, and then all the way to the right, you'll see, and again, this isn't my analysis, this, you know, comes off of statistical summary, is that when you get a value between point five and one, it's considered a strong strength of relationship between those two data points. If you get a score between a point three and a point five, it's considered moderate, and if it's point three or below, or really below point three, it would be considered a weak correlation. And I think that the scatter plot gives you some understanding of how it could look, or at least what it looks like, and the closer that those data points start to seem to fall to a best-fit line, again, the stronger the correlation. So ultimately, we did this, or I did this analysis for every one of our AP courses that we offered in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and they're listed here from lowest correlation to highest correlation. And then, what we created was a histogram in terms of how all of those numbers played out. So, you'll see the number of courses that, let me just pull the slide in my hand here. So the number of courses that were between a point three and a point four-two, the number that were between a point four-two and a point five-four, the number that were between a point five-four and a point six-six, we saw our greatest number between a point six-six and a point seven-eight, and even saw three of our courses at a point seven-eight to a point nine-oh. So overall, what we were seeing actually was a pretty consistent and strong correlation, and then, you know, starts to identify whether or not there are certain courses that we want to start potentially looking a little bit deeper into. So, AP Euro is a course that doesn't necessarily run every year, and has small enrollment that doesn't necessarily dismiss anything away, but, you know, it could be at least one way to start trying to understand and see if there is any reason for the correlation, and then obviously, to start digging in deeper. AP Physics is a class that, right now, we're not running, and also was a class with pretty small enrollment. Actually, that year was the first year we had offered AP Physics in a number of years. But otherwise, the rest of the courses are typically, pretty consistently, the courses that we offer year to year, and it actually was encouraging, as a first-time through, to at least see pretty consistent correlations, and an indication, at least, that our teachers have somewhat of a pretty good indication when they're giving out class grades, how it may compare to how students are doing on the AP scores. Again, entry point, by no means do I present this to you tonight to say, look, everything is perfect, and our AP program is exactly where we want it to be, but I think it's an example and a sample of the ways that we can start using data to get a sense of our programs, get a sense of courses, start to indicate where we want to make, we may want to drill down, go deeper into certain classes, and start to understand. So, the level of consistency that I saw here, one of the things that I was thinking of doing was to extend this data analysis to multiple years, but I actually started to rethink that this year, and what we started to do was map out average AP scores for all of our AP exams over multiple years. I think we mapped that out for three or four years. So, really beginning the foundation to allow teachers then to start using that data, and instructional leaders, department chairs, to start using that data, to start to get a better sense of where our numbers are falling. And, you know, I know questions have been raised, and, you know, I've known, I know that I've mentioned, what does open enrollment mean, to what degree do we ever feel like, you know, we have a great number of seniors that take very heavy course loads in their senior year, is there any evidence that it does lead to lower scores or not? Again, we've raised it as possibilities, I think when you start to lay things out like this, you lay a foundation of beginning to start to dig in deeper and get a better understanding.
Don't go anyway, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I figured the tryptophan would have kicked in by now.
Nice job.
If we're going to jump into questions, can we just go back to that slide, just so that I can under-
Very last one?
Yeah, yeah, the AP correlation.
Sure.
So, if I understand what you're saying-
This time we're gonna do it in reverse.
Sorry?
This time we're gonna go to the slides and reverse.
Yeah, in reverse, exactly, that's a different challenge. So if I understand what you're saying, the data shows that there's a direct correlation between the grade that the student got in the class and whether they, and the score that they received on the AP. So they didn't pass the AP, they got, they were getting low scores, grades in class. So the one-to-one correlation is they're failing the AP and they're failing in class?
No, I won't say it like that. So what it's not, what it's not doing is creating a, an aligned low, it's not creating aligned high points and low points. What it's showing is, is that if, 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 let's say, a teacher is typically giving out seventy-fives for a student who, for students who are getting twos on the exam, then it's pretty consistent. Kids who are typically scoring seventy-fives in the class are typically scoring around that two range. If kids who are getting threes on the exam are typically in the eighty-two to eighty-eight range, then they're consistently showing that. So it's not automatically saying, an analysis like this is not going to say, well, if you're getting a two on the exam, it means you should be getting a sixty in the class.
Dave, I think the prior slide provides an example of like the corollary between a class grade and-
Right. So, for instance, you see that there's a student here that gets a two and got a seventy-one on the exam. There's a kid who got a three, who got a seventy-one also, but I would say that it's more consistent to see our threes getting seventy-eights to low eighties, and our fours typically being high eighties to low nineties, and then our fives being mid-nineties and above. So, you know, when you hit a five, who is an eighty-eight, that's where it starts to throw off, and that would be considered one that's not directly in line with the correlation. But again, we may know more about that. We may know that there was a student there who was incredibly capable, but, you know, not necessarily keeping up with the workload of the class.
But put simply, what does this tell you?
I think this tells me that, when I start to look at this, I would expect and want to see a pretty consistent alignment, so that there's patterns, there's clear patterns, so that there's groupings of grades that students are getting in class that also shows an indication of groupings of grades that they should be getting on the AP test. If I started to see-
Why is that? Why is that? I mean, what is it, I'm only pushing-
Why would I want to see that, or?
Yeah, I'm just pushing it to try to understand, understand why, yeah.
Because I think that the score on an AP test shouldn't be a random, shouldn't be random. So, you know, I think one of the things that we're asking about is, to what extent do we feel our teachers have a grasp that they're teaching into, not teaching to the exam, but they're teaching into the exam? That they're, they're, they're teaching in a manner that gives them an indication of, I'm expecting my class to be able to perform at this level. And when you start to see a correlation between class grades and AP score, it's an indication that a teacher is doing just that. If I see scores that are all over the place, if I see a number of kids who are getting fives on the exam, let's say there, there's a course where five kids are getting fives on the exam, and two of the kids got in the seventy range, and one of the kids got in the eighty range, and two of the kids got in the ninety range, and likewise, in that same class, I have nine kids that got threes on the exam, and I'm also seeing those same threes, some of them in the seventies, some in the eighties, some in the nineties, then it's showing me that I have a teacher who doesn't have as strong an understanding of how their assessments and how their work in class is leading to an expectation of how that student will perform on the AP exam.
How can you substantiate that statement that you made?
I'm not sure which-
Well, you, because I, my question, you started to answer my question, and I'd love to hear you go further with it. You're correlating these things, and if I'm teaching one of these courses, and I get a handle on this data, and I say, you know, I have that perfect correlation or whatever, right, just as an example, that means I'm teaching into what the kids need to know to pass this test. How do you substantiate that they're not teaching to the test?
And I'll jump in, I mean, the reason why I'm-
Because I would be.
Yeah, because I'm struggling with this, as I always have struggled with APs and our passing rates, is that by definition, I've always thought that this is the prime example where a teacher does teach to the test. The objective of an AP course ideally is to get a five on the AP. It's that simple. We're paying for the test, we want our children to have college credit, and ideally, when they take the course, we're, that's, that's the goal, that's the objective, you want to get a five. So if you have a teacher that can see during the course of the year that the child is only getting a sixty-five or seventy or seventy-five as a grade, we now know the correlation is that they're probably not going to pass the test, because you need a three to pass, and the correlation is somewhere in the range, if they're getting sixties and seventies during the course of the year, they're not going to pass.
Right.
Doesn't that tell us then something more that the teacher isn't actually, that the curriculum instruction isn't reaching that child, and so the likelihood is that child is not going to pass the test? We know that during the course of the year now.
So, so there's a few, between, between both of-
Yeah, yeah.
There's multiple questions going on, so let me try to slow it, well, actually, I see them as different concepts. So, and they're related. So number one, when I think of teaching into a test versus teaching to a test, teaching to a test feels like drill and kill to me. It feels like we are constantly in, in test review mode, where we're going to keep doing sample upon sample upon sample, and maybe I'm overstating that a bit, but that's what it feels like to me. That's not what we do in our AP test. Plus, AP has changed their curriculum. Quite frankly, we talk about, we teach thinking, AP is coming on board with doing just that. There's a lot more open-endedness. It's, by the way, why you have a test that's graded on a scale of one to five versus a Regents, which is graded on a scale of a hundred, where you're making distinctions between a grade of a ninety-four and a ninety-five, or an eighty and an eighty-one. So the distinction between a four and a five is, is much broader in some ways, but actually more accurately distinctive. So, that's the first thing. So, do I want my teachers following a curriculum that is, and do I want them having assessments? And do I want them finding the right balance between knowledge, skill, meaning-making, and transfer to be able to maximize performance of our students? Of course, that's our goal. That's, I mean, ultimately, our goal in any of our classes, but it's not because they're constantly in AP test review mode, or practice mode, maybe that's a better way of putting it. I will also say, and Deb, I think this starts to answer your question, then maybe it transitions to what you had asked. College board has to approve every curriculum that a school runs, so in order for us to call a class an AP class on a transcript, and to actually have it say AP- Um, College Board has to approve every curriculum that a school runs. So, in order for us to call a class an AP class on a transcript and to actually have it say AP whatever. It, every year has to get approved by the College Board. So, you have to submit your curriculum, they review it, and they have to agree to it. So, um, you know, there are added benchmarks along the way in an AP class that you're adhering to. A curriculum that meets the standards of College Board and, and prepares students or teaches to the test, not necessarily, or into the test. Um, as I had said. Um, you then took, Deb, I think took the, the conversation to an interesting point. Because I think it goes back to where we've had the conversation about, we have open enrollment. And I think that starts to ask other questions. So, as a school and as a district, is our goal collectively to maximize our collective score in an AP course? Or is our goal to provide our students with rich curriculum? And to allow students to make decisions about what that means for them? So, I will tell you that we have students in our building who will take one or two AP exams, or courses and exams, for their entire high school career, and they may very well only get a one on each of those exams. But the fact that they demonstrated that level of rigor in a course and showed success, not on the exam itself, but in the course, means everything on their college application process. So, there is a, there is an interesting balance there, and one that I think becomes really important for us to understand. Um, and that's why when we've talked about the fact that we have benchmarks and gateways to our ninth and tenth grade honors classes, but we have open enrollment for the most part into, um, our eleventh and twelfth grade AP courses. Um, I think it's something that we can be proud of. That being said, to ask the question of, could there be areas, or is it fair to say that collectively, we would want to see higher performance levels in some of our AP courses, or maybe all of our AP courses? I think is a fine question to ask. But there is certainly a philosophical question or a philosophical point that I think we need to understand is at the heart of this as well. And I would say, the fact that we have open enrollment and the fact that we have a great number of students taking rigorous coursework. And that we do see correlation between how they're graded in their class and how they're performing. Is an indication that we're not just merely, for lack of a better term, we're not just giving away grades. So, it's not just about putting kids in AP classes, and even though they may wind up with a one, we're just also inflating grades and giving them ninety-fives in the class just because it's a participation grade in, in our class. There are standards, there's alignment, we're seeing correlation. Um, and, and I would say that this data actually, for the most part overall, shows some really positive trends.
I will say, Dave, in, in response that, and I think you know that I philosophically disagree with the fact that open enrollment somehow is mutually exclusive with our kids passing the AP exams. I feel like that's the message that we've gotten, and at ten-thirty at night, we don't need to debate it. But I, I do think that, um, when I see year after year, our kids not meeting the national passing rate for AP exams. That we can't simply attribute it to open enrollment. We can't, there's no data to support that. And if we believe that there's a correlation, I think we need to, to show the correlation at the high school. I think it, there has to be something more that, that demonstrates to the board that open enrollment is directly tied to some of these, these low AP scores we're getting. Whether it's an exit survey, did you study for the test, you know, did they meet your needs? I, you know, I don't know. But if the curriculum is set and the, and that it's designed for a student to actually get a five. Then I still go back to, are we looking at the instruction, the delivery of the content? And if there's a correlation somehow that a student is having a low grade, and we're just expecting that student to get a one on the exam. Then I would argue that we need to do more for that student during the course of the year to potentially raise that AP score. Because there's got to be potential there. So, I know we point to open enrollment every single time, but I still, in my mind, it hasn't been, I haven't seen the data to support it. And I'm not persuaded.
And, and I think it's a fair point, Deb. And by the way, I, I'm not so sure that what we're saying, um, is opposed. Uh, uh, I think, I think there's, there's value in being able to embrace both, both, both parts of what we're saying. I think what I'm saying collectively is I think we have a foundation of, of a system that, that I think is the basis of something good in our high school. Um, I think what you're also saying is that, you know, there could be a trend of data that we're seeing where it says that, you know, we need to dig in deeper, and, and there could be opportunities for us to see increased performance. And if we can have a basis of a philosophical program that makes sense for us, and we can also see growth and enhancement in scores, especially maybe in certain courses, then it's a win-win all around.
I mean, just to, to underline that, again, what I hear you saying is, here's why we have open enrollment. And what I hear you saying is, we're going to have open enrollment, and there's students who are struggling, we need to help those students. I don't see those as a problem.
That's exactly what I heard.
Yeah, I mean, I think just as a point of reference, and I don't know, maybe, maybe for the community at large. You know, this is a conversation, it's a conversation that, um, it's a conversation starter. It's not a conversation ender. And I don't think that any of the data presented tonight, or, or last week from the elementary, or two weeks ago from the elementaries, was like, here's our data, okay, see ya. I think what we're trying to demonstrate is, we have been using data over time, and we haven't always presented it. And so, I think the board's request to present more data is really what you've seen. So, I guess what I would like to walk away with from this is sort of, um, a positive. That this is in response to the request of the board. I think what you're seeing is a lot more dialogue around data, not only in this room, but certainly there. I also would say that I don't think that those two things are mutually exclusive. I think at the three-time-ago student performance report, I think there was absolutely, Dave happened to be here that night. There was absolutely recognition that our national passing rate is not necessarily, where, not where we should be in comparison to the national passing rate. Again, having said that, this is actually a separate idea. They will merge as we do more data study. The, then your data sets start to merge together so that you can really have that triangulation of data. Right now, we're sort of pulling apart. I think the question all along has been, how, how do our grades align with our AP scores? So, I think this was dipping our toe into one aspect of, of AP. I don't think this was meant to be the end-all and be-all conversation around AP, so.
And I would say, as an extension of that, um, I hear the conversation happening that you've been wanting to have. We're not necessarily at the point where there's answers, but the conversation's happening about how we're doing. Which I, I think is a big step in that direction. And I think when we see these slides, like, I got excited when I saw this. Because this introduces so many different types of conversations. It may not answer the question, Deb, that you're posing, but it, it does pose so much. And there have been a number of comments and questions that have been raised in my seven years in, in this room. Related to the correlation between grades and, and scores.
Yes.
So, it is getting at one point of saying, hey, look, here's one way of looking at it, may not answer the global question.
I, I-
Yeah, I, I, I was excited by this data.
I hear you, and I'm excited as well. I guess what I'm concerned about is, we all know that we do well in AP Bio. We've got sixteen kids this year, seventeen, twenty kids. This is a, this happens to be a profile of an AP that we meet the national passing rate by, you know, in, in space. I'm concerned that we're five years running with some of our AP courses, and we've never met the national passing rate. So, we can do all this analysis that we want, and it's helpful. But we still have to look very closely at some of these classes that our kids are not doing well at. And I hope we're not going to wait three to four to five more years to figure that out.
Yeah, or six or seven. The thought here really is that this is one of the tools that you said, and you're having the conversation with teachers, right? And why is this happening? So, you look at this data set, you look at the data set from two presentations ago, when we gave the other information. So, you start to piece it together, and why is this happening? As you said, the triangulation is starting to make these connections.
And I would hope that the, that the responsible conversation that we're having and that we've heard, the examples in the prior presentation in this one, is we're using it to prove.
That's right.
So, um, sticking with these, these two slides, I particularly got very excited seeing these. Just a little suggestion on the first slide, because of the i's going back and forth. Maybe you can sort it either by AP score or by class score. Because your, the, um, go back a slide to the left, because your i is trying to make connections. You do make the connections with the scattergram.
No, that's a good point. And I'll be honest with you, uh, yeah, well-
You were just entering it, and I get it, but I think maybe sorting it one way or the other, it's easier to visually make that correlation. Um, so, I got very excited with these two slides, and then, because, you know, I'm seeing this, and I'm like, oh, my God, this is great. Is he going to do this for all the ones? And then seeing that you did do, you know, giving us the correlation, um, numbers for all of these classes. But I need to know, did I hear you correctly saying that, um, you're not going to continue this? That you're now going to change and do an average of the AP data? You're not going to continue doing this kind of analysis?
So-
Did I hear that right?
I guess sort of. Um, my focus this year, rather than to do this correlation analysis for extended years, to see if the pattern exists. What I wanted to do this year was to start to look a little bit deeper at what the, what the average AP score was in each class over time. To see if that showed consistency. So, yeah, I mean, you know, that-
And it doesn't, it doesn't preclude you from doing this?
No.
This kind of work is-
Because to me, I mean, how I think this is helpful is if you did this over seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. Um, you know, because there are sometimes, cohorts are stronger than others, I think. But if you keep seeing a running theme within a certain subject, you know, I think that's also telling. It's telling in a variety of ways.
So, I, what I'll-
I'm not exactly sure, you know, by doing the average AP data, why you think, what, what do you think you're getting from that?
Well, actually, I'm going to go back to what Deb said. So, I think when I'm looking at, let's say, a four-year trend of average AP scores, you could start to see a la- You know, this is showing me our teachers grading the class in a way that shows alignment to how students are doing on an AP test. So, they may have alignment, but what we may find is that there's an elevation of the class score versus what we think they should be getting on the AP test, but at least there's a pattern. So, there's something good within that, but it's also not taking into account where my high score is and where my low score is, and is that where I want it? When I start to look at how students are performing on AP tests over a four-year trend, it might be easier to see it jump out that, oh, you know what, I'm only seeing a certain course getting in the mid-to-high twos on a consistent basis. Or, uh, what may have looked like a certain course is on a negative trend actually shows that, well, maybe they're consistently getting mid-threes. And they had one bad year, and they're back up again. So, I, I think you start to see the data in a different way, and it starts to see it strictly based on the result of, of the exam itself. And I think that gives you other information that you could start to explore into. So, I'm not saying one data set's more important than another. Again, I use them as examples, and I think it goes back to, you know, Deb, the way we went back and forth. By no means am I saying this is the only data set that tells the picture and you stop there. I think there are multiple ways to use data to be able to start to really analyze. And when we talk about the importance of something like the, the comprehensive AP program at the high school. Um, it's something we may want to look at. And by the way, it could be a mixture. So, there may be some classes that we say, I need to dig in deeper in such a way so that four-year pattern starts to become important there. Whereas others that are showing me that, uh, I want to see if the correlation is, is consistent over time.
I want to zoom in on something that you said, that I think we passed over a little bit. Um, you said that for the kids who are still not doing super well, they have the experience, and that's invaluable in their application process, correct? I, you, something like, I don't think I quoted you, but I-
Well, I would also say it's invaluable in their learning process, but yes.
So, I, I want to zoom in on that statement. Because I think that's a really important statement for us in terms of culture shifting type stuff. And moving away from teaching towards this, that, or the other thing. But the idea that the rigorous academic experience, and I think it would behoove the board, the high school administration, to really emphasize that fact for parents, teach parents that it's not all results-oriented all the time. For us, it is, right? But for kids, it's not necessarily results-oriented, it's, it's experience-oriented. And I hear you saying what you're saying, and that's a super valuable thing for parents to learn.
It is funny, it is, but I push back because at the end of the day, I wonder philosophically, because that is always emphasized. That as the principal, do you look at these results for AP Bio and see that we only got two kids that got a five? Is, is, I mean, that sounds like, um, something that doesn't concern us. And yet, I know that there's parents where they are looking for their children to, to achieve a five. They want the class to give them the potential to get a five. I look at this, and it, and I see our scores for this year, and I see the class grades, and it's strong, but there's still only two fives.
What's more concerning to you, Deb? Is it more concerning to you that we only have two, four kids doing it, or that they can-
No, just wondering if, if, again, the rigor, that we, we started, you know, a conversation here about rigor and excellence. And is this course designed for it to be rigorous? And to, for a teacher to teach to the level at which they're pushing and they're hoping for students to achieve five? Or is that just not what our AP courses are designed for?
Well, I, I, I don't know, I don't know that it's one or the other. I guess to me, Deb, the question becomes, there is, what's the grade that becomes the standard? At which point we say, yes, we, you know, is it, is it having eighty percent of the kids get fives? Is it having eighty percent of the kids get three or better? You know, I, and I don't know what the right answer to that is.
Well, because I think, I think we just need clarity. I, I think it goes back to goals and purpose. And I think when you have a system of open enrollment, which is a system that is strongly supported here. Then what we need to be doing is not be, in my opinion, is not painting with broad brushstrokes. We need to be analyzing our data clearly. We do have students who are exactly in there for the reasons that Dave is describing, and they may get a one, they may get a two. Our goal is always to have our kids meet the highest level of expectation. The expectation should be there. But we have some students who do take it because we've heard, and we get that feedback all the time. That students demonstrate that they are challenging themselves and putting themselves out there. That is a good strategy for college application, we know that. But we also have a fair number of students who, the goal is the five. And, and so, I think if we're going to be in an open enrollment environment, then we need to acknowledge all of the students across the gamut. And our analysis of data needs to reflect that.
Okay, but doesn't the analysis data have to indicate then which of these students are the ones who are there to get the one?
So, yeah, so Deb, I feel like, yeah.
But that's one, because how do you know?
But that's what we're saying, where, so I guess, and again, and it is twenty to eleven, so I'm just being mindful. We laid out a set of data in response to, to hearing your feedback. This is the first step of what you're seeing. I think that Dave and Matt have both acknowledged through process of whether it be AP or honors. Right, there are more data sets to be had. This is it for tonight. Um, I don't think anyone has said, has not agreed with what you've said tonight. I think, yes, everyone agrees, and it's given us sort of, what are the next steps? What will the next data sets be? Yeah, I think we're hearing it loud and clear. This isn't the end-all and be-all. One point in and getting greater clarity in our goals comes from conversations like this, right? So, we walk away hearing your feedback, hearing your thinking, and we're like, all right. So, then how does that inform our next steps?
Which I would say, what you said is true to what we've asked for over time. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure you indicated that you do next, it's very promising. I guess one of the questions we often have is, what might that timeline be? Because it is promising that if we, if we do the analysis you've done here, the one that you said that you do. That it gives you the opportunity to say, great, we have cor, we have a sense of, for the majority of our classes, there's a strong correlation. Now, we see that the years look at averages are, and now we start to look at how can we help the ones and the fours get the threes and fives? And I would like to still know, you know, is that, is that a couple months of, of working at this? Or is it waiting for next year or the next, what time?
So, I would say that-
This is exciting, well-
Yeah, so, and I would say as a result of tonight, we're ha, you know, we're happy to come back with you, with, you know, to you with some timelines.
That'd be great.
But I don't think, I don't think, I don't think standing here tonight, I don't think that any one of our administrators is prepared to give you a timeline at this point.
Yeah.
So, that's a great question.
Yeah, I, I think I am very excited. I love these two slides. I do like the, when you spoke about the average AP, because I would love to see, like, for example, that analysis compared to this and see if it matches. And then I would love to see sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen, like, all three years. Because, like you said earlier, Karina, it's not a broad brushstoke. There are different pieces to it. There are the pieces of giving the opportunities to the kids who normally wouldn't be able to take a class like this. And that's okay for the ones and the twos. But then also doing a deeper dive into, you know, the threes, the fours, and the fives. And seeing, are we meeting those needs? Are the kids getting the best grades they can be? Is there a way to tweak the curriculum? I think it's a combination of a whole host of things, but this is a great start, and this got me very excited. So, um, I would love to know if you're going to do that and when we could see something.
So, more to come on-
And, and Dave, I'm sorry about the time, just one last question, different slide.
Also, also other trustees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you guys go ahead first?
I decided not to ask anything else because I guess we're going to learn more. I just note a sort of internal consistency in discussing how a student might feel being in an honors class that they shouldn't be in, and then struggling, and a student being in an AP class, and then- that they shouldn't be in and then struggling and a student being in an AP class and then not performing at a certain level, just through listening to the entire conversation. So thank you.
Any questions?
I had one related to the Apple data. It seemed to me that there was, in terms of how the target was set in middle school versus the target in high school, that there was a difference in how those, those students meeting the target were, were turning up. Or something else that we look at between the schools to see, I guess, the same department heading. So, you know, we were looking at eighty and ninety percent in middle school meeting targets, but in.
So one of the things to keep in mind, Michael, is the way, the way the program has been rolled out was that it was rolled out in the middle school first. So you're looking at a program that now has had multiple years at, at the middle school and is really just starting to show its impact for a year or two at the high school. Plus, I'm also showing you data that is full now because we're now testing all of our students. So in the first year, year or two that we did this, we only tested a sampling of grades. So for the last two years now, it's the first two years that we've tested our entire program. So.
I mean, during the presentation, you made an interesting point too, though, about that, that what we've been kind of in the apples per cent, we had been a missing piece of instruction that affected that score. I don't know if that happens in ninth grade or if that's a handoff from eighth grade, ninth grade and in terms of.
Well, what I just, I mean, what I talked about was clearly our Spanish two points. So it wa, it wasn't impacted by, by the middle school. So, yeah, I mean, I would say, you know, certainly we, we saw data that was broken down the same way that you saw the middle school data. I thought it was relevant to combine it right now and to, for us to start broad and then over time certainly be able to share it in more distinction.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify something though. Because at some point during the Apple data, there was a, I, I took it as a comment that not, the curriculum hasn't changed to Apple yet consistently.
For all grades.
For all grades, but has there been more focus on ninth grade? Because the children are coming out of Main Street with the Apple approach.
So at the, obviously at the high school, we started with level two and progressed to three and, and four. And then, you know, AP doesn't, there's, there's alignment, but AP again, to go back to what I said before, is aligned to, to the college board. So we have not finished tweaking the level four curriculum, but our levels two and three have been fully aligned. But again, level three, this was the first year that it was fully aligned and we implemented.
I got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you done asking your question?
I have one question, but you can go ahead.
Earlier, you spoke about post-assessments and now there's like a self-analysis of the kids on how they're doing on their, on their exams and, you know, figuring out, you know, you described different boxes, like, you know, oh, it was just a careless mistake or it's conceptual, whatever. But what happens from there?
So I think.
And, and I guess what, and to add to that, because I know, you know, you have like little pockets here and there, but is there ever an analysis like, hmm, there was a big miss with this one? Does, does it ever happen that a teacher says, hmm, you know, this was, you know, fifty percent of the class, it was a big miss? Do I go back and instruct? Like, does that kind of reflection happening?
You know, in, in, in many of the end of year conversations we have with teachers, the feedback was, wow, these post-assessment activities are great. Kids really like them. It really informs their extra help sessions and it creates a, you know, for the kids who are in academic support classes, it creates a ticket to academic support every day. So now I know exactly what I'm working on. The other piece that came up a lot, Maria, from teachers, was, you know, they're doing, at this year, they spend a lot of time doing it on paper. But teachers are coming back to me saying, I should be doing this on, on, on Google Forms. Because then I can get student results, but I can also get aggregate results. And I can see whether there was a concept where, where the entire class missed. So unless I have that data all in one place, I can't see that that thread, it wasn't just this kid and that kid, it was everybody missing. We have to circle back because the group will go back to it. So I think it's, it's a next step for a lot of teachers. They view that as important and I think it'd be a good way to assess, you know, daily lessons, weekly lessons, and units in general.
I always appreciate both with the K five and here where we're giving examples, it's proven useful to the actual instructor. I have a question related to the AS reading data. You just referenced that positive, which is that grade by grade, the numbers drop off. Do you have any general ballpark or precise numbers in terms of what the AS numbers are created by grade?
I don't have them today. I can, I can provide them for you. I can tell you that, as I mentioned in the beginning, we have these two sections. So there's the AS, like a reading support class, which is really designed to help students who are struggling with just basic literacy. Then we also have an AS class for English. That class doesn't typically get smaller. The AS English class, which is really a support class for the curriculum of, of the English course, tends to stay in place a lot of times. That work is student skills and helping to keep track of just good reading habits. But what we are happy to report is that the reading course, the one that really works on developing those literacy skills, as you can see, you're going to have kids meeting their goals or very nearly meeting their goals at the end of this year, which would be an indication that their time is better spent elsewhere. And, and this is, you know, really our first full year with the G three thousand software and, and the work that it does. I, I have high hopes for this in the future.
Yeah, no, it's very encouraging that it opens up opportunities for students.
I just want to add, so just to make a link, you know, one of the things that we're able to look at now and, and the more we're looking and keeping our data in RTIM Direct, is when our students are entering. So one of the things we're trying to actually figure out now is, and we're looking at, is how many kids who are receiving services, especially at middle school and high school, are new to Irvington or weren't in Irvington, weren't in the elementary schools. And that's important for two reasons. A, it gives us some insight or, or actually lacks insight into what the education of the, of students were prior to coming here. But more importantly, what interventions have we already tried? So if we have certain programs that we're using at the elementary, I mean, starting with foundations and all the way up, if we have students that have been getting that type of foundational experience and they're still weren't getting it, well, continuing to just give them that in middle school doesn't make any sense. That tells us that we need a different type of intervention. The same, that intervention hasn't worked. So to just keep doing it and keep the child in that class is not, that's not smart. That, that's not really helping that child to grow. So not only is it helping us in terms of having this K twelve approach, it's helping us to look at our programs, it's helping us to look at our students, and it's helping us to make decisions, not only about placement of students, but programmatic decisions. And that's huge.
I would also add, and I may have mental footnote to bring it up before, but I slipped. We do have a lot of kids who opt out of the exams in middle school and having achieved three thousand data from the middle school really gives insight that we wouldn't ordinarily have. And the form of decision to.
Very powerful, really powerful.
Thank you. So if you want to try and move towards wrapping up, I'd be great.
Only last quick question, page thirty-seven, the PLTW chart. I was just curious, while the numbers for the PLTW classes are fairly consistent, they are somewhat, they've gone down from fifteen, sixteen to eighteen, nineteen for each of the three classes. And I was just curious whether, do you think there's any correlation at all with the offerings of computer science now? And, and do you, are you getting the same kids drawn to the same courses? Is that, or is this a, or is there any concerns along those lines?
Listen, I, I don't know if it's that, for, you know, if, if I look at, if I look at some of the overall numbers, they're, they're not all that inconsistent. Do I think that as we build out three-year sequences in multiple subject, subject, subject areas, will each one have an impact on the other? They of course will. I mean, you know, listen, we've had honest discussions in this room around what our classics enrollment numbers look like. So, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and lie to you and tell you that these things don't impact one another. There's only so many classes that a student can take. So, you know, again, if we want to have a one-size-fits-all model of an approach as to what classes every student should take, then we're not going to see course offerings like that. But if we want to see students to be able to have choice, then, you know, you do it at the commitment of having some smaller class sizes, but you have more opportunities and choice for students to be able to engage in.
Right, the keywords I already said were balance and student choice with program capability.
And what's exciting to me is when you go down, if you look at the nineteen, twenty requests and you do a sum of, of that, of that column and you go and compare that to others, it's just seen that you're drawing more students there. And it also makes you remember the, the analysis that Dave did, that Dave did last year related to female participation increasing as well. So, you know, not only we've seen more students enrolled in, whether it's PLTW or computer science classes, but we know that we're seeing a trend of female students increasing as well.
Certainly, that'd be, an update, that'd be great, that's a future point, now that women can, can continue.
I just want to say thank you to both the schools because that question, how do we know? And especially, you know, at the secondary level, it's been harder for, for me to see, to answer that question. But I really do appreciate all of the work that clearly has been put into these presentations and helping give us a little bit more clarity as to how you guys are understanding and knowing and letting us see that. Because we're not here during the day and we don't, we don't walk in your shoes and I don't want to walk in your shoes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, yes, Erin. Can you go to Mike?
That's the mic.
Can I come up and just point, is that, just to highlight what I want to say? I noticed that a lot of the classes had this strong correlation. But that doesn't mean necessarily that they're all falling into the same bands, is that correct? So it doesn't mean that students are scoring between a ninety and one hundred on all those AP classes where there's a strong correlation and thus scoring a five. It could mean, if I understand correctly, that students are scoring between an eighty-five and a hundred and they're all getting a three. And so there's a strong correlation in the grades.
Right, right.
Right, so I thought it would be interesting, and it might be a little too busy, but to put, do a scattergram of all the classes in different colors so then you could see where they're all clustering. Because I think to Deb's point, like, I think French and Spanish, if I recall correctly, aren't achieving the same national norms in terms of passing rates, and that would be really evident if you compared it to Bio. Because you'd probably see that they're clustered around a two, but maybe getting a ninety-five in their grades. So that was just a thought.
So statement, another question, thank you.
Okay, that's it, thanks. Yes, Dave, if I, and, but I just want to make sure I understood it correctly. Is that a correct assumption? Okay, thank you.
Just moving on to the committee reports, I don't know if anybody really has.
Thank you very, very much, excellent job.
Excellent job, thank you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Glad you have an early night tonight.
It's really.
We're going to end the prompt a little earlier.
Thank you. So with the committee reports, I don't know if we really have any true updates. Should we just move along?
Yeah, I agree.
So with that, we did the three questions and now we're into policy first reads.
Certainly Deb Moore and I. So there's a series of policies that, second set of policies that, second set of three of the four thousand that the committees worked on throughout the course of the year. You're adopting the first set this evening, this is the, the second set. We'll be looking at probably the reorganization meeting to adopt this set and work through the others through the course of the summer. So you can see the areas that are, that are covered. The encouragement for the board would be to, this is the official first reading of these policies. We can look at the eighteenth as well. If there's question and feedback, to filter it back to the committee members and certainly answer any questions that you may have, any edits. Because as you know, we work in Google Docs and we're kind of editing as we're meeting. So there's certainly opportunities where we may see typos that slip through.
Yeah, I had already written to the committee about a couple of things, but I just wanted to say something publicly, which is that I really think that this policy forty, four, three, two, five is so wonderfully drafted about academic intervention services that I actually wanted to highlight it and say it probably should be somewhere on the website because it explains things in a way that people could really benefit from.
I, I want, I want to point, so the, the initial, I want to say like age and a half of that policy is, is kind of drafted by school boards reflecting New York State standards and regulation. The balance of that, I, I turned to my colleague, Dr. Core and, and the administrative team, who, that is the body of the work that's developed here in Irvington.
Yeah, it was fascinating.
Thank you for that feedback.
Somebody read it, Raina.
Only takes one, right?
Makes me so excited. Thank you, Beth, thank you.
We just probably have a presentation coming about.
Oh, jeez.
Getting us really excited about going through our.
No doubt.
Policy.
I, I could list the other fascinating ones, but I'll wait for another opportunity.
You could start the club next year, maybe we'll start board clubs.
Policy club. We're going to start. If you could just join the policy committee.
All right, moving along.
Yes.
So we have, as, the next topic is the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund, which I can, you can.
So Ms. Stein obviously isn't here, but there's a pretty, knowing that she wasn't going to be here, we provided a, a, a pretty detailed public description. So the idea of any reserve fund is to be able to address financial needs down the road. We recognize that pension funds vary from year to year based on the performance of the funds. This year, we're seeing some relief, it's actually helped us to be able to provide for the things in our budget this year. We're pretty open and upfront with that, recognizing that it could present some challenges for us in the future years. However, this year, legislation provides for the opportunity for school districts to be able to develop a reserve fund for TRS, which would be the Teachers Retirement System. So it really becomes a two-step process. We do not have a general reserve, a retirement reserve fund. So once we establish that, our next step would be at the next meeting to establish a sub-fund specific to TRS. So this is step one of a step two, of a two-step process. So the board should anticipate, as indicated, that on June eighteenth, that there would be another resolution that would establish the sub-fund for TRS. At the same time, as Ms. Stein has indicated, we've recognized that this has been a tight year. We're not anticipating that there's going to be lots of excess funds available. So with that in mind, the important part is that we are establishing the fund and that we are going to make some degree of contribution, which we will address at the next meeting as well. However, you know, it, it's not going to be anything grand that's going to balance the budget in future years, it's to get the ball rolling.
And this is, this is something which we saw with the long-range planning that Ms. Stein did, that that's, the TRS is really a sensitivity point for us. So this is really important that the state pass that law this year. And if we look back five or six years ago, if people, if they just look at it now, say, oh, that was a big, a big jump in terms of our expenses, but that, that was because our TRS number changed. We had to, need to cover the difference. So are there any questions about this? Or it seems pretty straightforward, it's kind of a no-brainer, I think, for us to move forward with. Okay, so now we have our consent agenda.
So we would need a resolution specific, right, of seven one?
Oh, we're going to try and vote on that.
For motion, yeah.
Okay, my bad. I get a motion to accept motion seven one.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now, consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions, are there any items on the consent agenda? So it's starting at eight, we have a.
Nine point one.
Application situations, acceptance of minutes, that's great, we're really pleased with that. Policy adoption, section four thousand, a number of policies. It also includes the curriculum instruction in ten, acceptance of CSC, CPSC.
Which stipulations and settlements are we talking about? I don't, I'm not familiar with them.
Yeah, you are.
We're not going to talk about them again before we.
We had already.
Not in public.
Right, not in public.
These are things that we, we talked about.
No, I understood, was there going to be another executive session about these or these were clear?
No, 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 separate matters.
This is one for a sign up.
Good, in which case I have no questions.
And now we'll actually vote formally on. We have some personnel changes and approval compensation for our, our spectrum position for the conference for ACT testing facilitator, some tax certs, we have our treasurer's report. We have our treasuries report, and we have donations to Scott, to various scholarships, including the Paul Sotterelli Memorial, the Scott and Losenthal Scholarship, and bookshelves. And, uh, very generous donations, thank you, from the I E F. If you vote to approve these in a minute, um, and there's a long list of what those grants are and several contracts.
I did have a question, about the, about the, the position, the testing position.
I'd like, yeah.
I, I'd asked a question.
No, you had to pull out eleven point five.
Eleven point.
No, I mean, that's, if you want to vote separately, if you just have a question, you can ask a question.
I have a question. I don't, it's not a voting thing, it's a question. Uh, so I had asked a question about email, but I never heard back. So I, that's why I'm asking it now, not to waste time, but, uh, so how, how do you choose these folks for these positions? I, I'd asked this question before, I never got a real clear answer.
So Ms. Zerbo is. You post, you post positions and individuals will.
They apply and you vet and et cetera.
Yep.
And, and on that note, Chris, so.
Yes.
So when you have a stipend position for the College Board A C T testing facilitator, what is that person doing and why do we need a facilitator?
Do you want to explain? It's more of a nuts and bolts planning, scheduling.
It's scheduling, it's collecting, um, I think.
It's organizational.
It's the organization of it. And the organization is huge. And it used to be, uh, prior to this, so I want to say it was in twenty fifteen was the first year that we began, Chris? Does that sound right, twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen.
Um, prior to that, um, it was really in the hands of multiple people. So it was a little bit of guidance, and it was a little bit of Julie Orlando sitting at the desk and a little bit of Dave Cohn. And, and it really, it, it's not, it's not that the person is running it, she is coordinating it. It is coordinated, coordinated though, with Matt Samuelson. So in other words, she's doing a lot of the organization and the logistics of the collection, which apparently, we learned in the process, was actually quite overwhelming, um, to do. And so she's not scheduling all of the tests. In other words, it is done in partnership. So the person really.
Is she scheduling or not scheduling?
She is not. She is working in support with Matt Samuelson.
Matt's doing all the scheduling.
Matt does the scheduling. I mean, Ally helps. You know, there's a lot of moving.
It's a combined effort.
It's a combined effort, but she really coordinates the logistics of it more than anything.
Okay, so the actual administration of the exam here, no. See, what, that's what I'm trying to understand.
She's not proctoring.
She's not proctoring.
So she's, so, because we don't have the A C T offer here, nor the S A T. So this is, she's not involved in.
Yeah.
No, we, we do.
We do.
We offer.
We offer our kids to be able to take the A C T here if they have extra time. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, all right, yeah, I'm.
Enough of the vast majority of students who don't have extra time. We don't take the A C T here, we take it at other high schools.
No, but we take the S A T, right? I mean.
We have the S A T.
We do, we take the S A T, so.
No, but the S A T's not offered here.
This is College Board A C T testing facilitator.
Right.
College Board includes S A T, P S A T, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, so she.
Yes, the S.
No, but Raina's saying the S A T. The S A T's not offered here, nor is the A C T, correct?
Yes.
We take the, with all our students, take, take, take it school-wide.
School-wide.
We've been doing that for.
Well, and that's why I'm at.
For three years. Two, I don't know, I'm looking right now to see.
No, we don't, we don't.
The P S A T's.
The P S A T and the P A C T, but we've never had the A C T or the S A T in our, our kids go to Sleepy Hollow. That's very our.
Right, but we, we offer to all tenth graders.
Right, that's a P S.
The P S A T.
Yeah, not, not an S A T.
It all falls into this category.
So that's what I'm just trying to understand. So we are paying this woman, Allison Zerbo, for the P S A T administration for our tenth graders.
Yes.
Not the S A T or the A C T. Because I understand that if our, if kids get extra time, then students can take it here.
So.
Is that correct?
And she coordinates, right, so anything associated, anything associated with college board, Ally coordinates with Matt.
Okay.
That's what the position.
It's like a testing coordinator.
She's a testing coordinator.
Top, it's.
Yes.
It's the worst job ever, but can I ask you this question?
Yes.
So you offer this, it does, it's a terrible, it's a miserable job.
All right, let's stop, let's stop.
Allison, so do you have the same posted position for, for the three through eight E L A and math exam? Because that's a, another.
No.
Quite the, so why one and not the other?
Because we actually receive, there's, um, a part of the registration dollars that you pay. Comes back, and, and so we're able to provide a dissite. We have administrators or guidance counselors that collaborate to plan and organize all the state tests.
So you do this, you would do the same thing for three through eight, should it be the same situation? But they don't offer that kind of financing.
There's no, New York State isn't giving us money for that.
It's, it's not really necessary, it's, it's a completely different, the New York State tests are tests that we are responsible for giving. Our, it is coordinated at the building level. It is not, it's.
Passed, though.
What?
It's a huge job.
Um.
Bigger than this. I've done both, and this is big, much bigger than this.
All right, so I just want to.
Yeah, I'm not going to debate that with you.
I don't want to move it along, Michael, I'm sorry. We have, no, I'm not moving it along. I am digging in because we have a, an issue with other things like this, and I want to ask a lot of questions. So I apologize, Michael.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because it wasn't clear that you were staying on task, so.
I am staying on task, I'm asking serious questions.
So Mike, we can also share with you the job description for the testing facilitator? If that would be helpful? We have, in other words, there's a job description for this, so we're happy to share that as well.
I, I just want to know why we offer for one and not the other, or like, is it just?
Part of it, like I said, it's simple, the fact that we get money that provides for it, and it's extra work, and it provided tremendous relief, and it was something that, that was identified as a need because it was out there, and it's, and it's not just New York State tests, which are, we've, we've talked over the last three presentations about the importance of them. But this is, these tests are also beginning to affect kids' college lives and careers as well. So we want to make sure everything's done well, and we want to make sure it's done in mistakes. And we don't want work spread out all over the place.
Agreed with the need.
And, and is this the first, we, you said that we've been paying this stipend since twenty fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
But this, the amount of money we're approving tonight is for this past year.
It was for this past year. So here's what happened. So we have very few positions, this being one of them, that doesn't fall, um, inside what I would call like a normal course of business. So normal course of business for us is teachers getting paid a sixth-period class. We identify that now, and generally, if, if we're doing, if we're doing well on the reorg agenda, we, uh, you approve sixth-period classes. We have a system for clubs. In September, we post the clubs, we get those clubs, we list those clubs, we, um, calculate those clubs against our club budget, and we have a system for that. This is sort of a one-off position. So what I've done as a result of what happened here is I have actually added it in our internal document to a club list because we have a system for posting for clubs. We do it the same way every year. This position didn't end up getting posted in September as it should have been.
That's your question.
Which is your question.
I, I don't understand this.
And that's why you want.
So it's a.
Yeah, it's, this is, yeah.
It's a catch-up.
So I'm going to just say, okay, I'm going to just say, I'm, I'm really trying to explain this to you, and I am trying to be open and honest with you about where it is, what the process is, and how we do it, and what happened.
I understand.
So I would just ask that you be respectful to me publicly.
I don't think I'm being disrespectful, I'm just asking questions about, about something that's.
Well, your reaction is, is, is not. So, so as a result, this position, which has been, we've been doing for the last three years, did not get posted when all of the positions got posted in September. So as a result, it wasn't on an agenda. So Ally Zerbo, who has been doing the job for the last three years, continue to do the, continue to perform that, that job. So as a result, we are now going to obviously put it in a place where we ensure that it gets posted every single year.
In the beginning of the year with the, all the other.
With clubs.
So it's done in, so it's, look, in one batch, so it's neat and tidy about.
And, and is this the same amount that has been paid?
It's negotiated. That's a negotiated amount. That is the same amount every year.
It's negotiated with.
With the I F A.
That amounts, I think it's been thirty-five hundred a year.
It is, it's a negotiated, we negotiated that.
Okay, I, I will say, yeah, the reason it was, you know, that it was for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was what raised the question in my mind, but also because it said A C T, S A T, um, the, the nature of the job. But if there's a job description and what is done, I think that would be helpful. But again, just to drill down, it sounds like the, the, the work that is being done is also for the students who request extra time to take a standardized exam. And that, when they ask for extra time, the test is administered at the school.
So I, and I just want to add, she also coordinates A P.
So honestly, going forward, it should probably say College Board, because College Board is A Ps, S Ts.
That's right.
And, and the P S A Ts.
Somewhere along the line, when we generated this in two thousand and fifteen, someone came up with a title, and that's the title that carried for it with the set of responsibilities. The job description that we will share.
Yeah, but then you think of it all.
And I want to say the one thing, it's significant, we need to be referencing extended time, that's, that's critical for a child that has that provided for within an I E P to show up to take a S A T exam, whether it's in Irvington or Sleepy Hollow, to get there and not have that lined up and set up is highly problematic for that child because they're not going to, can't walk in and hold my I E P and say, you know, I get extra time. Um, it just simply doesn't happen. It needs to be processed well in advance and approved by College Board. So to ensure that all those boxes are checked well in advance is critical.
And prior to having this position, we had complications.
All the time.
All the time. Complications, kids in rooms, we had, we had a lot of complications. We haven't had any actually since we've been able to, um, have this position in place. And again, I just want to emphasize for you, and I guess for me, in my mind, I always think of it more as mostly the coordination of A P exams.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Maybe you got a first and a second?
Yep.
All right, Pauline, first and a second?
We still have four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we voting on what?
On the consent agenda.
All of the items.
Can we pull this one for a vote?
Sure.
You want to pull that one?
I want to pull that one for a separate vote, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh. Okay.
Do we move?